Good afternoon and welcome to the June 7, 2023 City Council Meeting. Call of order. Commissioner Becker, can you give us the invocation pledge? And back to the day, please.
So I'm going to warn you folks before I get started here. I'm not clergy by any stretch of the imagination. But I am the man of God, so as Commissioner Smith would say, let's assume attitude of prayer. And I'll make this short, but sweet. Lord, be with us today. Let us enter these council chambers and exit these council chambers with our hearts filled with good intent. May we respect each other while we are in these chambers together today. Lord, it's within your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On this day, on June 7, 1942, the Battle of Midway, one of the most decisive US victories in its war against Japan, comes to an end. In the four-day sea and air battle, the outnumbered US Pacific Fleet succeeded in destroying four Japanese aircraft carriers with the loss of only one of its own, the Yorktown, thus reversing the tide against the previously invincible Japanese Navy.
Okay. All right. Proven of the minutes. Any changes? Not look for a motion to approve minutes is read. Some got a motion by Commissioner Blaskas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Bill Cows, Supervisor of Elections. Come on up and give us the South Apopka annexation voting process and associated cost. Please, sir.
So, and before we jump into this.
Sure.
I just know Commissioner Smith, this was obviously a huge thing for him.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if we can postpone this to next meeting just so that we can all be on the same page with that. I hate that you drove here for that, so I'm sorry. Love to see you, though. So I didn't know if we wanted to do that or not. Obviously, listen to whatever everyone else says. Just because he's such a proponent of this, I wanted to make sure that we're all working off the same page of music, so to speak.
Well, I don't think we're making a vote on it tonight.
No, it's just the process.
So it's just, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Yep, okay. But well noted. Yep, yep. It's Cows.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, and it's always good to be in Apopka. And thank God for the 4/29, because I was able to make it even during a Zoom at noon today. So, so I understand you're interested in an annexation. I previously sent to the city clerk the cost estimates that we have for the two methods. Let me just kind of talk about what the landscape looks like first as it relates to elections in Orange County. First off, we are waiting to hear the news out of Highlands County because State Representative Fred Hawkins interviewed yesterday for the presidency of South Florida Community College, now College, in Avon Park, Florida. And so if that happens, we have to do a special election for House District 35. So we're looking at that possibly happening with an August primary and a November 7 general election. It also happens that November 7 is the general election for the city of Orlando. It's a mayoral and three commissioner election year, and then they have a runoff on December the 5. So as we talk about the options, if you want to do it sooner rather than later, those are some key dates to keep in mind. August 22, November 7, and December 5 will be potential election days in Orange County. The second part of it is, of course, the city of Apopka does have their regular scheduled election in 2024 on the March 19 Presidential Preference Election Day. So from that standpoint, those are just kind of the backgrounds of where we're at with what the election calendar looks like. When you first gave us the boundaries for this annexation, we estimated it at 3,348 voters, but that was back on April the 20th. So the voter roll does change, but that's the number that we use to base our quotes on. So from there, you know, there's really two options for how you can conduct the election. One method would be to do a all-male ballot election where every single person receives a ballot. And I guess before I get to that, you also have another decision to make as to whether you want to do the election for those to consider moving into the city and then the election for those who are in the city for accepting the annexation. So again, whether it's two of them at the same time or you do them separately is a decision for you all to consider. In terms of all-male ballot election, the other key factor about it is that by Florida law, a county canvassing board must canvass that election. So I gave you the previous election schedule for consideration in your decision-making because the fact that if you're going to do it, I would love for you to consider those three dates I gave you because I'm going to already have to bring together the county canvassing board to do at least the special election. And it looks like House District 34 or 35 overlaps with the southern portion of the city of Orlando, so we're trying to match everything up. So we have to use the county canvassing board to do those elections. So our estimate for a male ballot election where every person does receive a ballot, and I'm talking about both the annexation area and for the city residents, it comes out to about $12,080 is the estimate. And that's where the ballots are mailed out to every voter. The voter marks it, comes back to them. It's a 20-day window. The ballots go out the 20th day before the determined election date, and then the ballots would be returned through the mail, and we included postage paid on the return. And then they would be canvassed on that whatever night the election is. So that's the first one. It can be split up. If you did it in one section only first, we would then break out that cost for, or you can do that with the numbers we gave you for the unit cost for the different functions. The second one, obviously, is if you want to do this fall a polling place election, which we know that when the city holds their own elections, there's two polling places within the city. And then we could set up using the county polling place at the Bridge Center as the one for the annexation area. So we based our estimates on a polling place election to be on three polling sites on that day. Again, if you split it up and do one first and then do the other ones, it'd be a one or two scenario. But the cost, we estimated it out to do a polling place election. And again, with that one, you can use your city canvassing board to canvass that election. And again, we'd love to have you piggyback if you're picking dates this fall or piggyback with the presidential preference primary. And the cost for it is about $9,300 for that election. So in the process, you've already given us the boundaries so we can identify who the voters are. The election is on voters versus, in that jurisdiction, versus homeowners. So you can, we have the file and we can work from it. Obviously, the boundary line is not part of our standard precinct structure, but we'll make a subprecinct for it. So with that, that's pretty much from the election standpoint, both on scheduling and on costs and at this point, whatever questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Cows?
And you may have mentioned it, the lead time, how far in advance do you mail the ballots?
The ballots, if you're doing a mail ballot, it's the 20 days is the date that we can mail it. If you're doing a polling place election, then we've got to back up to any military civilians overseas 45-day notice. Then the 35th day is when the vote-by-mail ballots would go out to the voters the first day.
Bill, would you mind getting us, put that in an email just so we've got the dates and the numbers, just so we can put that up on our city website? We have an annexation, kind of a, on our city website. We could just, we'd add that piece to Blanch's nice little summary of what it takes. So I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Anything else for Bill Cows? If not, thank you, Bill. Appreciate you coming over to Apopka.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hope the traffic on 4/29 is still good. All right. Next up, Dan Garcia, Lieutenant. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. So the city of Apopka has had a long history of taking care of its reserve employees who serve in the reserve and guard. Me, myself, I've been in the reserve since I started with the city of Apopka, mobilized over six times since I've been here and always had a tremendous amount of support from the city. In March, I had a mobilization for 30 days. While I was there, I had the chance to nominate the city for the Patriotic Employer Award for their support, and I'm honored today to present it to you. So it's on behalf of the Office of the Secretary of Defense, the employer support of the Garden Reserve, to recognize its chief, Michael McKinley, and the Apopka Police Department as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Garden Reserve. So.
All right. Come on down, Chief. I didn't see you over there. All right. Chief, come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Here today to present the monthly safety and training update. What we did this month is we, as I kind of discussed in our meetings, we've broken down the Gannon Report into different categories: health and safety, suppression, EMS inspections, and other related fields within the fire department. This month, we concentrated on our suppression topics and improvements that we've made. We're going to run through some examples of those. With this report, you'll see a lot of stuff that we've completed. I believe Commissioner Becker asked yesterday about, this is approximately 78% of the suppression related topics. As a whole, we're going to get some more information and gather where we're at on the rest of the reports. Again, today's emphasis is on our apparatus and equipment updates and things that we've done. Some of the things, again, all this is related to fire suppression units. So tools, equipment, and SCBA property. So the left-hand column is going to show you the recommendations. The center column is going to show, or the one to the right is going to show you what we've done. Suppression, SUPP is the suppression, the category it's under, and then the fact that it's completed. So. Tools, equipment, and SCBA properly secured within the seating areas. We'd completed cab inspections of all of our apparatus and secured and removed anything that was unsecured, including personal tools. Another thing we've implemented is helmet brackets are being installed in each of our apparatus as they're being PMed or preventative maintenance for the apparatus. That is completed and it's in process of being completed. Apparates is a storage areas with positive means to prevent unintentional hose deployment top on all four sides. As we know, fire apparatus are designed to quickly deploy any type of hose, whether it's a large diameter hose off the back for hydrant supplies or quick attack hoses, inch three-quarter size that come off the sides. Most of those are designed to deploy quickly, and the way that they're secured in the cab has changed over the years. We went back and replaced all the bungee cords and replaced damaged hose covers. Engine 3's tarp is currently being replaced, which is the big tarp on the back. And Engine 4, which was just delivered last week, our new Engine 4, and any future apparatus is being designed with fully encapsulated enclosed beds. So we're taking care of that problem. Enclosed area, riding for brush trucks, we did a policy change. That was something that was, for our brush trucks, we had actual outside areas where members would ride and extinguish the fire. At this point, we have no external riders moving forward. Nozzle maintenance inspection and testing, we actually started this this week and it's completed. We will now have a outside third-party company coming in to do all our nozzle maintenance, testing, and inspections. Power rescue tool and annual maintenance inspection and testing. So as, we have two different types of TNT, or I'm sorry, extrication tools. We have Hearst battery-powered tools and TNT tools, which are actually hydraulically run. Our battery-powered tools were always on an annual service basis. We've actually added our TNT tools, which are our older set of tools, which are the hydraulically powered tools, to now have an annual service. So that was completed on May 15 of this year. Availability of wildland firefighting protective clothing. The respiratory protection mask and brush trucks were not sealed or cleaned. We believe when they looked at this, they didn't have the understanding that all respiratory cartridges and adapters are issued to all personnel personally issued, and they're unsealed and ready for those industries to deploy at that time. We believe what they saw in the brush trucks was older, out-of-use filters. Breathing air, we observed breathing air compressor at Station 1, no evidence the air quality had been tested on a quarterly basis. We have all the records for that. We've just simply placed those records now on a quarterly basis on the compressor and on heavy rescue where that air comes from, and so it is now posted. Fit testing procedures and annual practices are substandard. Records were not available for audit for fit testing. We've had all the records on the power DMS system since 2020, so we do have those records. And we actually ordered the latest and greatest fit testing machine this year, which is called the Quantifit 2. Fit testing, so everyone understands, on an annual basis, each firefighter has to bring in their issued self-contained breathing apparatus mask, and they actually go through a process with this machine that quantifies and qualifies that their masks sit, fits, and seals properly. So that's what that is. Life safety rope system and safety components are on some apparatus, but the policy is substandard and lacks requirements for inspections, reuse, and removal from service. We've, policy's been updated to have that in line, and all life safety rope and equipment is maintained to NFPA 1558 standards for all life safety rope and utility rope. We've separated out now life safety rope specific to only being used in emergency scenes. We have separate training life safety rope specifically for training now. Personal accountability system is not effective or compatible with mutual aid partners, particularly the Orange County Fire Rescue Department. AFD is using ring and clip system, and GES recommends the Passport velcro system used by other departments in the region. We did purchase that Passport system to match Orange County. The ring and clip system that we were operating, that they saw, was actually our backup system. We use what's called the SIMS 2 Accountability System, which actually integrates our air packs into two different computers that are carried by both our district chiefs. So anytime our personnel turns on their SCBA, it actually communicates to that computer, and that district chief or commander can see what level of air the SCBA is at at any time during the fire. If there's a low air level alert, if there's a pass device that goes off. And in fact, Orange County has the same system, so when they come on scenes with us, that actually shows up on our computers. So we see that as well. Crew integrity, members operating is two-in, two-out, needs to be more reinforced, and the members held accountable for this. This is something we're going to continue to address in training, but to understand the two-in, two-out rule. That is an OSHA-established rule that we have to have for, if any time someone goes into an ideal H environment or immediately dangerous to life and health environment, we have to have the same, those two people outside to be liable to act if something happens. To understand this, this is really a hazmat-related thing. Like I said, immediately dangerous to life and health. So something that is law, and it's something we emphasize at all the time. So we're going to continue to address that in training. Frontline personnel that reported they're often wearing gear that was only rinsed off for the rest of their shift or next, practice needs to be significantly enhanced in this area. Personal accountability, decon, and wash, we want to make sure we emphasize that with all of our members. The SOG was updated and all gear extractors were serviced. We understand the challenge, next, we understand the challenge of keeping tools and equipment clean. However, some of the apparatus compartments were filthy with tools, equipment, and PPE was not properly cared for and maintained by frontline personnel. Again, we've got with our crews, wanted to reemphasize that and make sure that we leave our equipment clean in a state of usefulness and readiness. Much greater attention needs to be placed on the SCBA program, including inspection, maintenance, and cleanliness of all SCBA and mask. Again, there is now an SOG in place for that, and we've actually instituted a quarterly gear inspection through our PS track system, which is our asset management program. So now every quarter, all of our firefighters are required to complete their own gear inspection and report any damages or anything that needs to be replaced. Again, Station 2, that was kind of a repeat with the policy change. There was a latch that was not securing on Brush 2, which was fixed, and the hose was Like I said, on May 17, in the previous slide, we had all of our TNT tools completed and maintained. Engine 3 was one of the apparatus that does have those tools on it, so that's why it's mentioned multiple times here. The cutters on the hydraulic tools were damaged and they were replaced, and the decal was updated to show that it has the proper maintenance and inspection. The Engine 3, also, the tagline for one of the dry chems extinguisher was missing in the compartment, so we swapped out with the extinguisher, and all extinguishers are serviced and are currently serviced on an annual basis. Station 5 noted that there was damaged turnout coat in service hanging in the gear locker that should have been placed out of service. This was some, this coat was not in service. We will often allow our firefighters to keep their old gear for training if they're doing some sort of, you know, search or anything that we, they're going to be rough and tough on the gear. We allow them to keep that gear so that they don't mess up their new gear. We since have come up with a different way of marking the gear that's used for training only to make sure that we know that that is for training only. Again, some of these are repeats, securing hose lines and portable equipment, replaced all the deck cord and secure all the equipment, and loose items in the cab. Again, that's something that's repeated. With that, can I answer any questions?
Any questions for Chief?
First of all, I want to thank you because yesterday you just spent quite a long time with me yesterday. But what I do want to address and bring up is that we did talk about putting the, soliciting the RFP again, and I believe that you agreed, and so did Chief Knapp, that we should put it back out. And it's something that we at the council, and I'm speaking on behalf of the council, am I saying to put the, solicit the RFP once more for?
So I've put in sample language that all cover in council reports.
Okay.
And we can discuss it then.
Okay.
That way, gives better direction about what the RFP language should be reading versus what was in the last one.
Well, but we did discuss that yesterday because that was a concern. And so just want to say thank you because it was a long agenda review, and you did sit there and you spent a lot of time with me. So I want to say thank you to you and Chief Knapp, and also for considering and agreeing that we will solicit, we will once again solicit the RFP, and you were all on board for that. So that's something that will come up at this council meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Next up, Blant Sherman.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, members. Just want to introduce to you the investment advisors from Morgan and Stanley. That's the company that we selected and was awarded the contract. They're here today to introduce themselves. We have Glenn Scott and Tricia Mingo, both of which have over 20 years of experience in financial advisory and investment advisory. Glenn actually has 30-plus years and 20-plus years for both of them in the state of Florida. So they're going to give you a brief presentation, and Rob told me what to do, and I still don't know.
Thank you, Blant. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, people of Apopka. We're honored today to have the opportunity to introduce ourselves to you and to present ourselves for.
You're going to need to be one or just the other. Yeah, it doesn't go very far.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I have to sit dead center and smile at the camera. Real quickly, I'll walk through who we are and the process that brought us here today. Morgan Stanley is a leading investment bank, both here in the United States and globally. Our group is a specialized team based in Denver, Colorado, that exclusively invests money for public entities. We regulatorily inside the firm are designated as government enterprise specialists, which puts us under a much stricter regime of oversight and compliance. We do not engage in political activity. We do not make campaign contributions. We are fiduciaries, which means we have sole loyalty to you. Our compensation is spelled out in the open RFP. The RFP was a low-cost RFP at 4.5 basis points fixed cost on your investment, total investment portfolio, which is 4.5 one-hundredths of 1%. So if you're looking at your personal accounts, you may pay a financial advisor 1% to 2%. The city is paying 4.5 one-hundredths of 1% to have our services. Our sole compensation is based upon that. We have no outside compensations that would distort our loyalty to you. We are dedicated, our team here is dedicated to investing public monies around the country, as I mentioned. We work very diligently to keep ourselves apprised of best practices in investing of public funds, and we are experts in state statutes, which the city operates under for the investment of money under the 218 statute here in Florida. Real quickly, I'll just kind of give you an overview of investing of public funds. If you look at the triangle on the upper right, it's a hierarchy of objectives for the investment of funds. The first, and this is both statutory and in your investment policy and best practices around the country, is the preservation of capital as the first goal, then safety and liquidity of funds, then a diverse allocation of assets across the allowable investments, and then. and then achieving a return on investments commensurate with an appropriate level of risk. If you look at the constraining documents, that sort of bullseye target there on the lower right, or excuse me, lower left, if you look at the whole page and think of that as all investment-grade fixed income securities that are available in the United States, state statute constrains us to a very small corner of what is allowed, so.
Can you speak into the mic?
You personally, I'm sorry, you personally may hear about different types of investments or consider or do investments on your own. It's very likely that those are not eligible investments under state statute for public funds. It's a highly constrained set of securities that are even allowed. And there are two types of investments that are made in state statutes that are handled differently. One is the deposit of monies in banks, and that's handled here in Florida under the QPD system, which is a system of collateralization over and above FDIC insurance. So when the people's money is placed into a bank above $250,000, there's a process of additional collateralization being pledged by the bank to protect those dollars in case of default of the bank. And then if you were to buy individual securities, those are controlled by the 218 statute and your investment policy. So you can see the various constraints there that further restrict what we actually invest in, starting with state statute, then the investment policy, then the use of the funds. So we sit down with your staff, we look at what are the planned expenditures, what are the natures of cash flows to the city, and we model out an investment portfolio that rationally reflects that. And then lastly, we take into account what's going on in the world and markets to select the securities that we place into the portfolio. I'm going to turn this over to Trish real quickly and walk you through where we're at in our next steps.
Let's shrink this down. Okay, you can hear me okay there?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, I will serve this city by being support to Blanche and her team here. We are in the process of the contract execution, and then once that's done, we'll do onboarding, compliance, risk, and reporting, and then any other support that the city will need from Morgan Stanley. Morgan Stanley has the resources to benefit the city by including safety, confidence, efficiency, and cost savings. The city's investment policy matrix will be built into a rules-based software product by Clearwater, which is cloud-based technology, and in we will, the Zephyr Group will utilize Clearwater and a dedicated compliance team that is separate from the Zephyr Group at Morgan Stanley to monitor the portfolio daily. We will receive reports daily, the city will, as well as Morgan Stanley portfolios, on the compliance and the investment policy. And in addition to these oversights and controls that I have mentioned, the Clearwater statements give detailed information on portfolio characteristics, performance, cash flow, and risk tolerance, as well as daily pricing of securities. Clearwater includes auto-generated GASB reports, which will help with the city's year-end reporting, and then these reports can be ran in any timeframe, monthly, quarterly, annually, or on a custom timeframe. And then each day, the city's investments will be reconciled by Clearwater, so completely outside of Morgan Stanley, and this constant data upkeep gives our clients the confidence that they are basing strategic investment decision on current data. And then the entire Clearwater solution is integrated, meaning your accounting, compliance, performance, and risk portfolios are all derived from the same system, and this will assist the city in tying out their general ledger and assist in annual audits at the end of the year. Back over to Glenn.
Lastly, I'll just give you a quick snapshot of where we are in terms of interest rates and where the city begins the work with us. What we're looking at here is just a quick look at yield curves. This is US Treasury yields. The horizontal scale is time going out from two months, one month to 10 years, and the vertical is interest rates. The light green line is where we were a year ago. The sort of gold line is where we were at the start of the year, and the green, dark green line is where we're at presently. The state statutes in Florida and just general, generally good practices in public fund investing typically keep money inside of five years, and the vast majority of that inside of two years. So we're really talking about the left side of the graphic here, and you can see the interest rates have risen tremendously in the last year, as we all know, and the Fed is meeting again here later this month and may raise rates once again, but we're probably getting closer to the top of the interest rate cycle. The city has invested safely, legally at present, and is heavily in very short-term securities, so they've, you've taken advantage of the rise in interest rates, and you're well-positioned to earn a very good market rate of return this year and to ladder out a portfolio at the appropriate time to take advantage of these higher yields that are available presently. That's the end of our formal presentation, Commission. Welcome, any questions you may have.
Any questions, Commissioner Nester?
Sure, no, this was definitely something I spearheaded. I really appreciate you guys being here. I think it's something with that dynamic interest rate market that we have, we need to take advantage of it. We have a lot of cash sitting in accounts right now that we need to make sure we're investing properly, obviously making sure that we're dealing with that triangle you described, that we're dealing with in that capacity. You made a note about short-term securities. What are we currently invested in?
The city is invested in the SBA pool, which is what's called a local government investment pool. There are two sets of those types of pools in Florida. This is the one that's operated through the auspices of the state. It's run private, has private investment advisors, but it's the state-organized pool. And then there's several others that have been organized under the 163 statutes here in Florida, which is shared powers like an authority. Those operate similarly to money market funds and ultra-short-duration bond funds. They're only open to local governments, and those types of systems like SBA are in 45 of the 50 states have similar systems to that. There was a problem here in Florida that some of you may remember with the SBA, when it got stressed out and exposure to SIV securities, and so we want to make sure that we understand what is in those pools and analyze them thoroughly before making investments. There was a lot of changes that were done after the problems that the SBA had, and right now it's operating pretty soundly. Then you have money that is invested in local banks, and those are under, as I mentioned earlier, those are in the QPD system, the collateralized system. The issue there is they are paying you a fairly aggressive rate from a global point of view. That's not to say it's, there's not room to take a look at that further, but banks tend to be a little slow on the way up. When interest rates rise, the deposit rates they pay tend to lag a little bit. They're very quick going the other direction, but not as quick going up, but you are competitively bidding those and getting fairly decent yields on your current investments. There's two ways to think about it, Commissioner. There's, we want to move the, given the amount of risk that you're assuming at any given time, we want to make sure that you're efficiently investing those funds to get full return against that amount of risk you're assuming, and then working with your city staff and you, we want to gauge where the appropriate level of risk is, as reflected in the values that you bring as elected officials and your, and the staff and their professional wisdom. So we want to dial that in both ways.
And then, so the Zephyr Group itself, is it, I guess, can you describe your relationship with Morgan Stanley? Is it like a direct, is it a second-party affiliate, or how does that, how are you guys?
We're direct employees of Morgan Stanley. We're on the wealth management, institutional wealth management platform.
Okay.
And we were comprised over the years as a GES specialized group.
Okay. So the expectations moving forward then, you guys brought out like the next steps. Is it going to be providing kind of a detailed plan of how we can, I mean, the whole goal here, to simplify it the most, is make the most money we can with no risk. So how do I do both of those things? I know it's not how it works, but so that's the goal, is how do we properly invest, and is that some, is the expectation that you guys are going to look at our policies, look at where we're at now, and look at what type of kind of capex we have down the road, and try to plan for that with us, or what does that look like on your end?
Right, so we will work with staff to identify next steps. The investment policy that is adopted legislatively by the commission was last written in 1995. It's a little dated, so probably we'll take a crack at that first, do a revision, bring it up to date, make sure it's reflecting best practices around the country. There's model investment policies that are promulgated by Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization, United States and Canada, that sets best practice standards for financial work in local government, and we use those models along with thoughts that we've developed over the years about how to best write policies. And then we'll bring that before you all for your consideration deliberation.
What does that look like timeline-wise for that to come back to us?
Typically happens pretty quickly. I would say inside 60 days.
Oh, wow, okay. All right, I look forward to seeing it then. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Mr. Becker?
No, I guess the main point is, you know, with this Clearwater Analytics reporting that we would have access to every meeting that we come to, we know instantly what our current position is.
Yeah, the city staff will have, okay, so there's obviously cybersecurity issues here, but I want to, it's an online system that is updated on a daily basis. It's actually marked to market on a daily basis, so every security you own has an independent third-party pricing service nationally recognized that Clearwater, not Morgan Stanley. We don't touch that data. We can't manipulate that data, so there's a good check and balance and separation of powers. And then that service marks your securities to market, and that's available to the city staff online on a daily basis.
Right, but point being, staff, if we, if we ask staff to provide it every single meeting, they could outsource that, bring it to us, and we would always have full visibility into what's going on with our.
That's correct.
Mr. Blaskis?
Well, it's a giant step forward for us and looking forward to it, and like Commissioner Nester said, the sooner the better, so our money can make money.
We look forward to working with you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you all for coming. Okay. All right, next up, public comment. I read the decorum statement. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. It is the policy of the City Council to permit and encourage input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the Council for action. If you wish to address the Council, please proceed to the podium when called upon and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address, of record, organization, if any. Direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The Council and the city staff encourage constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Speakers and members of the audience shall profane at all times from rude or derogatory remarks, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning. If violations persist, after such warnings, violations, violators may be removed from council chambers. And with that, Susan?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. Today, I'm back here again about infrastructure. The picture you see is Myrtle. No sidewalks. Sidewalks aren't what I'm here about. This is on Magnolia, where there's a sanitary storm drain that has collapsed. This is between it and the intersection of Hawthorne and Magnolia, and this is the intersection. The Homeowners Association in Magnolia Oaks has been reporting this now, according to them, for almost three years, and all they get is fresh cones and barricade tape. The collapse you can see in the pictures goes all the way back past the sign. It's well over 100 feet, and that's the only sidewalk into Hawthorne Oaks off Magnolia, and it's a single-entry development. There are two people that live in that development and one that lives off of Washington that are wheelchair-bound and use an electric chair for mobility. They have to go out into the road to circumvent that. This is the one on Myrtle. The city got called, they went down, and they put up cones and barricade tape, and then this is the one on Myrtle today. They went and took the cones and barricade tape back down. Now, if you remember back to the first picture, there are no sidewalks on Myrtle. Both sides of the street are city proper. The sign says it's an Orange County road. Whether it's an Orange County road or not, I don't know, but that lays on property that is inside the city limits of the City of Apopka. We've got a whole bunch of lawsuits filed against the city now over people tripping on good sidewalks. When people have no sidewalks and they're forced to walk in the road or in the grass, and they trip and fall into one of these holes, that's Myrtle again without any sidewalks. And the spot where the hole is, if you look down the length, you'll see two pieces of concrete poured into the road where they did some patchwork just past that palm. It's on the left-hand side, it's on the Dream Lake side. So we've got all these things going on. We've got buildings in the city that are not up to snuff. We've got infrastructure like these stormwater drains failing, and this is just two of them within four blocks of one another. Okay, it's bad enough we don't have sidewalks. Is the city going to fix them, or are we going to go back out and put up more cones until they fade out and the barricade tape rots from being exposed to the sunlight? I think the people in Magna, in Hawthorne Oaks deserve better than what they're getting because they've been asking. And I asked the two ladies from the Homeowners Association, why didn't they come up here and say something? Because they're afraid of retaliation for speaking out. That's the sad state of affairs. When people that run a homeowners association are afraid to come in front of the city council and speak their mind, that speaks volumes. So it's been going on with them for three years, and it's well past time for the city to take action on it other than cones. Thank you.
Chuck, are we able to just take notes of where those are so we can get that taken care of?
I made a note.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the Apopka City Council. Hope you're having a great day today. My name's Bill Tobias. I've been living here in Apopka for about 40 years. First, I'd like to thank you all and the city for the investments that have been made in the parks and recreation facilities. I personally am an avid tennis player, and I've been utilizing the public courts in the city for all of that time, initially at the courts that were at the Katelyn Nelson Park some years ago, and now at the Northwest Recreation Complex. Part of my journey has involved professional coaching and group lessons. It's been a real benefit to me and my family to have the facilities and the training available through those groups, and I appreciate the support you've given to these services. The courts are well-maintained at the Northwest Complex, and the quality of the coaching and instruction my family's had through Tennis Galaxy has been a real help to us. I also appreciate the city's efforts to make tennis accessible to all the residents, regardless of their age, skill level, or finances. The court rental fees are very reasonable, and the rates for the group classes and the private lessons are among the lowest in central Florida. I've also contributed to the kids' scholarship program that Tennis Galaxy offers, and I'm very proud to have a charitable initiative like that in my community. So what could be better? Through the efforts of the coaches in the city, the number of tennis players has grown a great deal, so much so that we no longer have enough courts to service the demand at peak times. This has led to some awkward moments out there where courts have been scheduled and people have come to play, and then they get disappointed when they don't have access to the courts. It's simply a supply and demand issue. My request to you all and to the city is to move quickly on an investment in additional courts at the Northwest Recreation Complex. Thank you for your time today. Hopefully, I'll see you on the tennis courts. Thank you.
Okay, Albert McEmmy.
Okay, Albert McKimmie?
Albert McKimmie, 3603 Golden Gem Road. Apopka citizens for honest government is who I represent today. If we had the ability to turn back the clock and city hold just 10 years, what would we observe? What would be obvious in this city is we had a mayor beloved by its residents, and residents who loved and respected their mayor. What is different today and who is responsible is that Brian Nelson? Simple answer is no. The residents of this city in conjunction with its appointed officials allowed this to happen. Now we have taken ownership of the fact, today what we should be doing is look at how we in conjunction with the commission and with residents of this city can improve the outlook. During the last six months, many of these meetings have been farcical, and much of that blame was directed at the peanut gallery. But let's just go back to the last meeting when a representative of Southwick held the mayor accountable. The microphone was shut off and Brian Nelson became so animated he was in danger of launching his gavel into the public gallery. It would appear when he does awaken from his slumber, he has problems with anger management, self-control, as well as telling the truth. As a group, Citizens for Honest Government present you with notice of our intention to proceed with legal action against the city records department for noncompliance in respect to Florida statute, chapter 119, public records. We do not believe our grievances lie directly with the records clerk, but rather with the administration itself. Previous complaints have seen Susan Boone have to write an affidavit on behalf of a former city attorney stating he was not interfering with her office. Will she now be faced with having to provide one on behalf of Brian Nelson? Because it would appear that he is monitoring and controlling mail that was not sent to him, nor did it include him being added in any copy. Now, this has not just happened on one occasion, it has happened twice that I know of in the last week, once with Dennis New and once with Edmund Poiree, people who regularly criticize Brian Nelson. Why is this a problem? If those who continuously make public record requests in order to hold the mayor accountable have those records overseen by the person being investigated, it's highly conducive to integrity, transparency, and accountability. Dennis New recently's request for a public record were required to help access if there was misappropriation of funds by Brian Nelson was answered by none other than Brian Nelson. For your awareness, I did put those emails into the packet that I gave you. We do not need the mayor's word on things we require to see the records. In recent meetings, the mayor misrepresented the truth, the most recent with dealings with Southwick, and now Jim Hitt with regard to affordable housing has deposition has been postponed. Unfortunately for the city and those involved, we obtained 250 pages of court documents and the tapes that Southwick obtained from the city. So irrespective of whether this city resolves their problems with Southwick, we have the evidence, and we intend to pursue that. We also have information that Brian Nelson directly interfered and had direct involvement in the draft Gannon report and tried to alter that report. There are other instances when we feel that emails are not being responded to or perhaps are not.
Thank you, Ms. McGinn.
Sylvester Hall?
Good afternoon, Sylvester Hall, 391 Roland Hills Lane. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you for stepping forward and taking that very challenging to serve the community. However, when I say that, there's some requirements that comes with that. And I truly, you hear me say this all the time, our country, our city, our state, and our country is in a very challenging time now because too many good people are standing by watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it. So I come here today to plead to everybody in this room, everybody that can hear my voice, the panel, I come here to plead to your moral conscience to please get involved with what's going on locally in your city, state, and in your country. If we elect our old government, elected, appointed, and first responders, if we use these guidelines when we make our selections, then we will get better politicians, we will get better servants. And every one of these matters, principle matters. Integrity matters, honesty matters, accountability matters. We had a vote 3 to 2 to remove the city attorney. That vote was honored, but it took a challenge. We had a vote 3 to 2 to remove the fire chief, that still hadn't been accomplished, that needs to be honored also to give the Duran family some closure. Responsibility matters, morals matters. When it comes to making a moral decision, money should never be the deciding factor. Money should never be the deciding factor when it comes to making a moral decision. Ethics matters. The last city council meeting that I was in, Commissioner Nester, we was talking about the money at One Florida Bank. And I wanted to get up and make a comment, but at that time, that wasn't the appropriate time to do that, and I agree with, I agree with that. But since I'm here now, let's address that, when we're talking about ethics. We're talking about One Florida Bank. It's been circulated so many times, who authorized the $2 million? Who authorized the $29 million? The mayor said he's completely 100% for transparency. We want to know that. So why haven't that been looked at? And if there's an ethical violation, that needs to be dealt with by the council here, period. That's what we're talking about accountability. Character, most people, you know, they worry about their reputation. Your reputation is what somebody else thinks about you. Character is who you are. Character is who you are. So I challenge each one of you up there to look at what character, what is your character? What do you stand for? Procedures. We didn't, when we went out and hired the Gannon company to come in and do the report to survey, what procedure was used then? Because when we want to hire them now to come in and conduct the training and changes, now there's a different set of procedures. Why is that? Why is we can just go out and hire them? Now, when they come back, we got to go out and have our RFE. Why? Procedure just matters. Leadership, if you're going to lead, lead, follow, or get out of the way. And lastly, Mayor, laws matters, they matters. So hold each other accountable for this.
Thank you.
Leroy Bell?
Leroy Bell, 2308 Blue Meadows Court, Apopka, Florida. Glad to see you happy today, Mayor. I want to talk about Bill Cowell just for a second. When you guys start going back and forth on setting the date, I would ask you guys to consider the 9,000 with the two, Jason Dwelling, the VFW, and down on 13th Street. With that said, that give a chance for the people that serving our country overseas to get a chance to vote. And I think we should pay for it, money shouldn't be a problem, you know? We've been paying out seven figures for lawsuits, and we got some more coming, we got 39 million. We can use some of that for people to voice their opinion and their right to vote. And I would like to also say on that point, at each one of these, with the city have to put up the people to run these, let's not use the churches to be the ones to run the election site, simply because you know how these preachers is with this administration. We know how this is, and especially when they're against you guys. Minister come up, I think he put it last meeting night, what was it, Baptist, or Catholic, Presbyterian, it's a miracle for them to come together to have a proud breakfast for the mayor. What I think would be a miracle is for them to come together and stand up and advocate for the citizens of Apopka and not this mayor. I think what they should do along with this mayor is come together some kind of way and something never happen for the Duran family. Come together to pray for this family openly like they do this mayor. So I'm just asking, please keep the preachers out of it. Because you know, since we out of the peanut gallery, you know that New, the young man, Sylvester, whoever get up here and speak to you guys, we speak to you guys for the citizen of Apopka. We don't ask you for anything personally. Like the preachers jump up, I want the tax money, I need it in my pocket. And they look to the mayor to hand it out. So please protect the right of the citizen of Apopka, especially with this annexation and the voting, thank you.
Okay. Dr. O?
I need my bodyguard. It's not going to work. There we go. Good afternoon. Administrator Edward Bass has worked with me on many projects over the years that have benefited the community, including the state historical marker for the first school in Apopka, adding Little Free Libraries in the city parks by the Rotary E-Club of Florida, the human trafficking signal for safety signs for the parks and restrooms, and training for the law and public safety officers in Apopka, the Service Hero Street dedications on Main Street, Park Avenue, and Jason Dwelling Boulevard in the city, adding Florida-friendly landscaping throughout the city medium, sidewalks, and canvases to reduce watering, pesticide use, mowing, and fertilizing, saving the taxpayers thousands of dollars a year, and following through on serious situations in the city, to name several. He was always jovial, but serious and thought-filled about each situation. He listened to each suggestion and understood the value of the facts presented. Based on these facts, I award a Paul Harris Fellowship of the Rotary Foundation of Rotary International to Ed Bass. The presentation of Paul Harris Fellow recognition is the Rotary Foundation's way of expressing its appreciation for a substantial contribution to its humanitarian and educational programs. It is named for our founder, Paul Harris, a Chicago lawyer who started Rotary International with three business associates in 1905. He worked in citrus groves here in Lake County first before going to Chicago and inventing Rotary International. Rotarians often designate a Paul Harris Fellow as a tribute to a person whose life demonstrates a shared purpose with the objectives of the Rotary Foundation. A world of peace and goodwill comes closer to reality today as Ed Bass becomes a Paul Harris Fellow. It is because of gifts like the one I made in his honor to the Rotary Foundation that they can carry out an array of programs to achieve beneficial changes in the world. Ed, you've improved living conditions by following through on problems in the city conditions, you've increased food production with the Florida-friendly landscaping, you've helped develop better education with the Little Free Libraries, you have helped develop wider availability of treatment of rehabilitation for sick and disabled, we've helped build new channels for the flow of international understanding, you have helped reduce pollution and recovery of flora and fauna species with the landscaping. A contribution to Rotary Foundation is an investment in the ideal of goodwill, peace, and understanding. That is an ideal held high by rotarians the world over and one that I clearly share. I am a major donor of Paul Harris Fellow, and we have other Paul Harris Fellows in the room today. John Land was a 62-year rotarian and wore his pin every day. As Rotary works with such individuals of goodwill, we believe the ideal will come in, become a reality. It gives me great pleasure to present these emblems of appreciation given to each Paul Harris Fellow. I have the certificate right here, and the pin, mine is a bit different because, like I said, I'm a major donor, but here is his pin.
Thank you, thank you, Phil.
And I hope it gets delivered to him. We'd like to get some pictures.
Yes.
Like to get a picture so that we can.
We have a couple rotarians in the room.
Do we have any other rotarians in the room? I know that we have at least three. We can get somebody else to help take a picture. Thank you. Great, we appreciate it. Hold my press here. Here's this, and then the pin.
Anybody else, Susan?
Yes, Norrette Turan.
Yes. Uh, Norrette Duran.
There was one gentleman. He came in. I don't know, gentlemen. I don't know who came in. Yeah.
All right, good afternoon. Norrette Duran, Public Services Department, former general employee with Public Services Department. Today I bring to you a presentation, excuse me, on employee compensation. Why? Because employee, because transparency is not just a buzzword. Every employee by policy receives a yearly performance evaluation in accordance with the authorized form. This is my last evaluation in two thousand twenty-two. Twelve categories explicitly defined. The expectation being so long as you fulfill your duties and responsibilities, you will receive a three or four percent raise. The form states anything lower or higher, and a lower or higher score requires explanation. Twelve categories. As you can see there. Now, a journey into the unknown that I received with a public records request, the director's evaluation. A completely different form. And this one states less than five percent, less than five percent, requires explanation. How lucrative. But wait, there's more. This director, this public services director, he wants a ten percent raise. So he solicits a memo from one of his team, perhaps his team leader, someone I never would have guessed. Why? Because he was so supportive of my objections to this man's hostile and toxic culture, at least to my face. This memo is a farce, all of it. But the underlined items, sentences are key. This memo is an outrage. It is an insult to government professionals, but apparently fools gold to this administration because he got his thirteen thousand six hundred dollar raise. Ten percent. Yes, ten percent. Ten categories of failure. Fooling this administration. Ten categories. Ten percent, a perfect score plus four. Having been witness to seventeen months of this director's incompetence, one failure truly sticks out. This is a safety hazard constructed at eighteen eighteen Kelly Park Road, just to the east of Jason Dwelly Parkway. It was a field change. A field change was botched because of this director's failure in every category, allowing non-technical staff to make critical decisions contrary to published safety criteria. I was the engineer of record. I was removed. But even so, I voiced my concerns. I even provided standards for this director's consideration, but the hazards still exist today. Unqualified persons given duties and responsibilities will be to the detriment of everyone. It's time to restore the public trust. It is time to break free from the chains of incompetence at the highest level of the Public Services Department.
Jerry Hogan. Tell me when. My name is Jerry Hogan. I'm from Orlando. I'm here because I have an eleven-year-old grandson who plays tennis in Apopka with a tennis galaxy company here who uses Apopka's tennis courts to give their lessons. Now, he's eleven. He plays two sports. He plays tennis and he plays soccer. He does have to pay a fee to play tennis and learn from professional teachers, but according to my daughter, it's a reasonable fee. I, on the other hand, am the grandfather who pays two hundred and fifty dollars a month so he can play soccer. I think I deserve a round of applause. Anyway, I'm just here to thank you for allowing that. Uh, I once served on a commission in Reno, Nevada called the Commission for uh, Real Estate Tax Appraisal Values. And we had people who came up and spoke at public such as this only for three minutes. It tested my belief in the freedom of speech from some of the stuff we had to hear. What I've heard here is nothing but professional people trying their best to get an idea across. My favorite guy was a guy who appeared at every meeting, every month. And all he wanted to do was come up here and he wanted to play a song on his guitar. And he was horrible. But we had to sit there and listen to him. And I want to thank you for sitting here and listening to me.
Thank you.
David Persick. What was the name?
I apologize. I have terrible handwriting. It's David Panzik. No problem at all. Uh, good afternoon. Uh, David Panzik, uh, I'm not a local Apopka resident. I am from Eustis. But I wanted to be here today. Uh, I want to begin by thanking the city of Apopka for approving upcoming event for a company of mine, Raising Office Project. It is going to be taking place on Father's Day, June eighteenth, at Kitlein Nelson Park from eleven to three. This is going to be a family event that is free entry and will include fun activities such as bounce houses, obstacle courses, face painting, lawn games, as well as the popular splash pad which is already in place at the park. In addition, we will have a DJ for music, food trucks, and guest speakers, which will be announced leading up to the event. Uh, now, you may be asking, what is Raising Office Project? So I'm happy to inform you. Uh, it is a nonprofit organization founded by three dads with the goal of raising the next generation of leaders, not followers. And we believe that this starts with the parents in the house being active and involved in their kids' lives. We want our sons to be raised as gentlemen with the knowledge that they are protectors and providers for their family. And our daughters to know their value, to be able to recognize what a man is supposed to be and how he should act. In addition, we want our children to understand that nothing in this life worth having comes easy, encouraging parents to properly prepare their children, that the real world isn't fair or easy, but that it's ultimately a competition, which can be won with hard work and determination. So if anyone has any further questions afterwards, I'll be happy to answer. Uh, but for now, I just want to thank you for allowing me the time to speak, uh, thanking the city of Apopka and the Parks Department for approving our permit to have the event at Kitlein. And I'd like to close by inviting members of the council, anybody here present as well, uh, to attend Father's Day event, free entry, Kitlein Nelson Park. And thank you very much for your time.
Time again?
I'm sorry?
The time again?
The time, eleven AM, three PM. And I have, I'll drop, drop one off for you. Be just, I'm walking by.
Awesome. Thank you. You got it.
Um, Michael Duran?
That's with, um, Chris. Go see to send me an invitation.
Mike Duran, Clearmind. Um, you guys all heard Sean Wyland's update. Again, it is really about nothing. Talks about bungee cords, holding the fire personnel responsible for cleanliness of the bunking gear, bunker gear, and things like that. Um, it's not that these things don't need to be done. These are kind of items that should have already been done. It is absolutely disgusting that a fire department has thirteen hundred, uh, thirteen hundred items that they have to address. And this fire chief decides to start with, uh, replacing bungee cords on the back of truck to hold some hoses down. Uh, still again, no accountability. Uh, I asked in last city council meeting that the city manager administrator does have the authority to relieve the fire chief of duty. I requested that. I've got no response. I would ask that sometime during this meeting, that this city administrator, that he has the power to make some voting, that he should have the power to at least weigh in on whether he agrees or disagrees that the fire chief should be relieved of duty. Division Chief John Howe, his review period was due February seventeenth, and that goes through February of twenty, uh, twenty-two, and that goes through February seventeenth of twenty-three. Apopka firefighter, my son died on July fifteenth. According to two separate subject matter reports, it was due to the department that was negligent in training. The state fire marshal violated your department, issued a citation. These are quotes that Sean Wyland decided to give on John Howe's perfect performance review in the same time span that my, uh, my son was killed in the line of duty at a fire station working on fire equipment. John has continued his knowledge in his role. He continues to seek out new knowledge and best practices, lie. John consistently shows up early and assures that not only is his job complete, lie, but he's ensured that other tasks are up to standard. What standard? My son is still dead. John is consistently looking to improve the department, that's a lie. He's extremely dependable, another lie. He's always willing to assist other staff. My son is still dead, another lie. Because of John, we were able to hire twenty-six positions, another lie. That was because of me, my family, the fire union, and you commissioners, that those positions are in place, not John Howe. John Howe is the reason that we had to come here and fight for that. John communicates his goals and objectives to subordinates, another lie. My son worked in suppression. John Howe is the division chief of suppression. He has revised or created, revisited and created SOGs that now include trailer and towing. Now, my son is still dead. Where was this before June thirtieth? John emphasizes on safety in all aspects of his job. When? Not before June thirtieth. My son is still dead. These go on and on and on of a global report that John Howe receives as a perfect review. Now, I'd like to give you a little story if I can. On July fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two, my son is in CCU. His lactic acid is building and the doctors don't know why. They rush him down to the second floor to try to determine what is wrong and was happening. While he's gone, myself, Austin's mom, and his daughter, we're in a quiet room and we're waiting for Austin to come back up. As we're waiting, I see staff, nursing staff, who are standing in what was normally an empty hallway. And out of curiosity, I walk up and I peek my head out the door. And I could hear Austin's mom behind me says, Michael, don't look. But I poke my head out of the door and I see a patient with nursing staff on a gurney, running full speed, and a nurse is on top of this patient violently, aggressively doing CPR. And I remember thinking, that poor bastard, he's having a bad day too. As that gurney came closer to that door, I realized it was my son. And I scream and I yell and I tell his mom, that's Austin, that's Austin. And I run after them and I go back into the room and they're violently trying to revive him. And I don't know what happened. My legs disappeared from underneath me and I'm on the ground. And staff is helping me up and somehow a chair appeared and they sat me down. After they regained a pulse from them, they came to me and said, he's fine, he's fine. And I had to reiterate, I don't know how many times, is he good? Is he good? You got him. You got him, right? You got him? You got him, right? And they said, yeah, we got him. He's got a pulse. And I go back into the quiet room and I tell his mom and his sister, they got him. He's gonna be okay. For fifteen days, my son fought for his life, every single day. And this would be no different.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I got tired of just standing around, so I wanted to walk out into the hallway and the doors, the... So I go down the hallway to my son's room, this fifth room down on the left. And I wanted to see how he was doing. And I walk in front of the room and the nursing staff is in there and it did violently trying to revive him. And I lose it. I break down. Why? And they don't know. So they suggested they have to go in and do exploratory surgery, deliberately cut my son open to look inside of him to see what's wrong with him. And they say, if we don't do it, he's going to die. And if we do it, he might die. And we're Durans. We will fight for the better end. And we did it. We told them to do it. We're doing everything to try to save my son. I go, he goes into surgery and I go down to the parking garage to get his sister to try to tell him what kind of day my, her brother, my son was having. I tried to go back up into the quiet room. All the staff was in there. And I didn't know why. And for a moment, I felt excited. I felt relieved. I would have sworn that they would have high-fived and said they missed it and they got him. And it was silent. It was deafening. The nurse comes back in and tells, tells me that my son still has a heartbeat. If you want to go save your father alive. And I go in and I hug my son. I begged him not to leave. I begged God to take him, to take me instead of him. And out of that silence, I hear a soft voice from the nurse. And she said, that, that's his last heartbeat. And that is what I have on my life, my son's last heartbeat. You cannot tell me that this department did perfect. You cannot tell me that there was nothing that they could have done different. Nothing that they could have done better. My son died on Chief Wyland's watch. He is responsible for what goes on in that department and what doesn't go on. John Howe is the division chief, worked directly above my son. The state fire marshal made it very clear, Dan reported it very clear, there was no training. Todd Jones and Austin Duran had never seen that equipment before in their entire life. And we sit idle and we allow Sean Wyland to go home to his family. We give him a perfect score, perfect, that he did nothing wrong. And we give John Howe a perfect score, he did nothing wrong? Then why is my son dead? Why? Why is he dead? Can you tell me why? You gave John Howe a perfect review, he did nothing wrong? This is a hard fight. You're dead of no principle and no honor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Monique?
Time for change. Yes, sir.
Okay. Monique?
Monique Morris, Apopka, Florida. I can't hardly even do this presentation now, but, um... And I'm just here to, just to let you guys know about the Juneteenth, um, celebration that's happening on June seventeenth. And, um, as you know, on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, over two years after President Lincoln declared all enslaved persons were free, they came up with Juneteenth, which is basically June and nineteen together. And I want to thank Deputy Chief Miller and Captain King. And I want to thank Deputy Chief Miller and Captain King and Carolyn Ray, and the ones that's been working with us. And we have, and I'm, and all of you, if you, when you check your email later, you're gonna see an email from me, because we're like short $549.38. And so I stand before you today asking for your support in this, Commissioners and the mayor, if you can support us in this and come out to that day, to the parade, and also to the festival. The parade will begin at Wheatley, at Phyllis Wheatley, 18th and Marvin C. Zander's, and it will end at M.A. Board Street at Belonzo Williams Park, where we will have the actual festival. The parade starts at 10:30 that morning, and then the festival starts at 1:00 P.M. So I would like to also ask that the police and everybody, they're gonna be there, so if we could get help. Our balance with the city is $549.38. So I actually, within your heart, that you guys can take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more speaker, but I can't understand the name. Looks like Loomis? Anybody else feel out of guard? Okay.
Might be me.
Good. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, Mike Cooper.
I'm Mr. Cooper.
I'd like to take the first minute of my time.
Sure.
And I want to take a minute of silence, just for a minute, for everybody to be quiet for a minute. And if you want to say a little prayer for the Duran family, but take a minute off of my time, and let's take a minute just to be quiet. And just think about what the man said, not about the chief or anything about that, but just have a little, a moment that you can digest what the gentleman said about his Okay, thank you. Mayor, Mike Cooper, 700 Jim Commerce Court. Just a couple of things, I'm not here to complain, just that everybody knows that. We're getting ready to start a pretty good-sized project in a downtown use area, Zone MU Downtown, on the corner of Hawthorne and Fourth. And it's gonna be a nice park. It's two 14,000 square foot buildings. I know it's not nothing like you folks have been used to. I mean, it's a little dinky hole in the wall compared to these monumental projects that you guys are approving. But I'm gonna give you some pictures here of the church that's next door. I'm not complaining about it, but I would just like to see if we can do something about the possibility of a school that will be taken over. The two buildings, some of them have been a school.
Oh, this building?
Pardon?
This building?
No, that is what's next door.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
We need to do something about that, and we're gonna be putting in the sidewalks and things like that, so the children can go from the church that bought the Cooper Palms Park Sports Flex over to that facility. It's not 100%, it's in the talking stages right now, but anyway, we've got our drawings coming out to you, to the city, probably within 30 days. And I just want to know if we could do anything about the Hawthorne cleanup, also on Hawthorne and Second Street, which is pretty bad, too. I know we've got the used car lots up on the corner of 441 and Hawthorne, if we could anyway do something about that. I know they're businesses and things like that, but also the AOK Tire behind them, that's pretty much a disaster. And you guys did do a good job on paving Second Street. That is much, much better, and I want to give you thanks for that. That was after our meeting, Mayor, that you and I had. I appreciate that. Now, a couple of things. When will the turn signal, if a turn signal is gonna be put in at Bradshaw and 441?
She is back there.
Let me add, before we talk that, let me go through it, then I'll sit down, and you guys can do it. What is the progress on Okoye-Papka Road? Is it, is it gonna be widened? And if so, can we get dates? Because that's getting ready to become a major, major catastrophe.
Yeah.
I mean, it's getting, I mean, you've got huge buildings going up, you've got the hospital, you've got the new fire station, and you've got a two-lane road. Martin Road is getting ready to be a disaster, too, because you're getting ready to open up four or 500 more apartments there. I mean, you guys gotta really think about this kind of stuff. And I travel the road all the time, and that's the only reason that I'm saying something about it. And I'm sure there's a lot of other people that are thinking the same thing I'm thinking. Also, the parking on 441 in front of Chuck Wagon. That's, that's an accident waiting for a place to happen. There was almost a woman hit coming up, she was parked, she opened her door, and she almost got hit. And she had to screech up against her car. And that area in front of McLeod and Chuck Wagon and so on is the only place on 441 that there's parking. Why can't you get rid of it? You built a half a million dollar parking place in the back, it's beautiful. Why don't you use it? Get rid of the parking on 441 before you really have a main accident. And I think you ought to really consider that. It wouldn't take much to, and that will also clean up, and you could put something along there that would enhance that area anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. We'll get back to you. Yes, I think, I think this property, I think that property's in the county, so I need to...
It's, it's right next to us.
I, I know, but there's some weird, some of those car lots that you're talking about also are in the county.
If you guys can do something about it, you know, because your kids are gonna possibly be going there now, so.
Okay, you got it.
So, Mr. Cooper, I just want to say thank you for giving up one minute for prayer for everyone today. I thought that was a show of compassion.
The guy has a big heart, and he did lose his son, and you guys all need to think about, if you lost your son, you would probably feel the same way. I know I would, you know.
But I just want to say thank you. I thought that was a beautiful gesture. Thank you.
Okay, next up, got five items on consent. Anybody need to pull any of those? If not, look for a motion to approve the five consent agenda items. Got a motion by Mr. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Apopka City Center, Jim?
Good afternoon. Jim Hick, Community Development Director. This is a presentation regarding the Southwick Commons Master Development Plan and a discussion regarding the balconies. The Southwick Commons is located at the southeast corner of Sixth Street in Alabama. It's part of the city center. It consists of about a little over 12.8 acres. The applicant had submitted the major development plan, which I'll refer to as MDP from this point, for, for the proposed Southwick Commons apartment complex. There are three buildings, totals 192 rooms. The Development Review Committee did complete its review of the major development plan, and there were just a few issues that were outstanding that the applicant did take care of. And we did have the, the final formal approval of the MDP at city, at the DRC meeting this morning at nine o'clock. The primary issue at this time is staff's interpretation of what constitutes a balcony. This is also part of the development agreement requirements, and DRC does believe that the industry standard for a balcony is a usable outdoor space, which is also demonstrated by the balcony definitions and uses that were part of your packet itself. I've got a few other comments coming up on the, for the project itself. So this is the general location. The, in accordance with the development agreement, each phase or parcel of the property designated in the master plan, a construction plan must be approved by the city prior to issuance of any building permits. This statement basically means that the city staff, and in other words, the DRC, should have the authority for the approvals and the decision regarding the balcony issue and what type should be relied on by the DRC itself. The development agreement does state a balcony and a porch, and a porch, we consider is, provides an outdoor living area, and a balcony would also provide the same outdoor use. The applicant has insisted that the style of balcony adheres to one definition of what a balcony is, and this style of balcony is typically referred to as a Juliet balcony. They basically say it is a balcony because it protrudes from the building itself, and it has a rail in front of it. So this is the, the site plan itself. Couple of the portions on the plan that, that they did add information to is, they did put a, I think this is showing up, yes, a, an emergency access point down off of Eighth Street, basically running through, and this is only used for emergencies. This is police fire, if something were to occur, which we, obviously, we hope not. They did correct and put in the correct size fire, fire truck for the routing going throughout the whole project, so that meets, meets code also. They did add in a sidewalk connection coming out to Sixth Street, and, but the, the overall distance, by the way, from the building over to the property line is 145 feet, which far exceeds the, the normal requirement for, for distance setbacks. Overall, this is just the overall site information itself. They did put a list of amenities, which was also a request, and this is, this includes those amenities, the luxury amenities that were part of the development agreement. They did a very good job with those things. Overall appearance, I've only got two of the three buildings because it represents basically what it does look like. The balcony portions that they are looking at, basically these, that's this area here, it's a sliding glass door with a rail in front of it. Again, it's not a usable space. Something happened. Jumped forward. Side view. So the city comments have been addressed. Like I mentioned, the only remaining thing is the develop, the balcony development provision. Staff has provided multiple examples and definitions, not just Wikipedia, as mentioned at the last meeting. I had multiple information regarding the balconies themselves, and the one that was first in your list in the packet itself was from Encyclopedia Britannica, and the majority of those refer to an outdoor living space that you can set a couple chairs and eat breakfast on, or something like that. And this has been clearly conveyed to the developer. The developer, of course, disagrees with what staff's interpretation of the balcony is, and also the expectation and interpretation from what the city's perspective is, and that of the DA, which was entered into by the city of Apopka and Taurus. It was not part of their purview to review our interpretation. So my feeling at this point is, do we have an 11-inch balcony that you can put your foot out onto, look around the corner, or do you have an outdoor usable space, which is, again, staff's interpretation? And that's what we're looking at right now. So this is a, the last slide of the presentation that was done last May in 2022 from Wendover, and as you can clearly see, there are balconies on their project. This is something that Wendover has apparently built, but it appears there's balconies all along the side, there's balconies in the middle portion here. This is one of the end units. Obviously, we can't see what's going on in, in the center portion, but there do appear to be balconies. So it does seem like their intent was to build balconies, but I don't, I don't see a usable outdoor space, at least in the, what was presented to us. I do want to mention that we, we have accepted the construction site plan, so that's being reviewed, and we'll be coming to DRC for that. And we also have building permits that have been submitted. We could not, we typically would not review those until the MDP is actually approved. So those have been submitted, we've accepted those, and they'll be able to get the, the current, the current rate for transportation, the impact fees, things like that. So we're hustling this along, this is just the only, the last stumbling block for this project at this stage.
Okay, any questions for Jim?
Are we hearing more, or are we just hearing?
Well, no, we'll have, yeah, it's a business item, so we wanted, yes.
I'll leave my comments to you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Rebecca Wilson, 215 North Eola Drive, here on behalf of Wendover and the project Southwick Commons. As I was sitting there, I was just thinking, nothing in my three years of law school really prepared me for arguing over what the word balcony meant in a development agreement. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna first begin with, I do not agree with Jim that it is staff's perspective to take the English language and interpret it in any way that suits staff. The word says balconies. We have provided balconies. We have not provided a Juliet balcony. There are two types of balconies that we have provided on the building. One of those balconies has, as, as Jim pointed out, it's not a window, it is a sliding glass door with one, it's one, about one foot deep, and it is, I want to get it, seven feet, four inches wide. The second type of balcony that's provided is five feet, eight inches deep and 15 feet wide. So some of this is driven simply by what the architecture looks like from the building. You wouldn't necessarily put the exact same type of balcony, you know, on each one of the, the units. But what's more important is, we did review the DA. When we submitted, staff said, you haven't provided balconies. We, we went back, we provided balconies. And when you look at the common, I mean, I went to Merriam-Webster, and it's a platform that projects from the wall of a building and is closed, and is enclosed by a parapet or railing. So we have provided balconies. I, I don't know what else to do at, at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions you all have. We are ready to build this project, and we'd like to move forward.
Any questions?
Just for visualization purposes, can you go back to the concept drawings of the current?
Sure, and I want to mention that we have Bill Platts, our architect, in case you have any questions that would stump me.
Right, so that doesn't look like, is that a side view one, or is that just the side architecture that's just railing for architectural purposes? Maybe it's the other elevation? Go back one more? Yeah, so the two balcony dimensions that you just described, can you point to those on here?
Bill, can you come up and, and help me? I just want to make sure I get it correct. So the balconies that are right here, what is... So those are the one foot by...
Seven foot four.
Seven foot four.
Okay.
And then...
The corners, the corners are large.
These are the large balconies.
Got it. Okay.
Mr. Nesta? Okay. All right. Anybody else? Come on up.
We did, we have.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name's Paul Faircloth, 620 East Sixth Street, Apopka.
The reason, or the history kind of why I am here today is the properties comprising city center were purchased in 2006 and 2007. In 2010, the city commissioned the Pazuti Plan. In 2011, Dubstred begins operating Highland Manor. 2016, we had Keith and Schnarr's visioning. 2016, we had the first development agreement. 2019, we had a new LDC with this MUD, Mixed Use Downtown designation. 2021, the developers' agreement has been amended. And now in 2023, we have UCF working on another plan. So basically, it has been 17 years and a $15 million-plus investment by the city. For us, it's been 17 years of stress, frustration, and anxiety. At each of the previously mentioned milestones, we were told, go along with it. It'll be worth it. It's in your best interest. You will get that same density in the future, so live with it. And now we have a very nice hotel, we have Highland Manor for special events, a Wynn Dixie, and verbal denials to us on our density. Hardly worth 17 years of stress and anxiety for our family. So now we have, well, we have conceded the fact that apartments will be built there. And if that's the case, then please, let's make them the very best apartments we can. I believe this was the intent and the spirit of the developers' agreement. Before I begin comments specific to the balcony, please don't infer that we are in favor of apartments being there. We have not, and we still are not. We don't think that that was the wisest use of the city resources. Go back to the Pazuti Plan, which was quite unique, it was more to our likings. But anyhow, it matters not if the apartments are affordable market rate or luxury. We don't want apartments there. And again, we have conceded the fact that they're coming. When I rent a hotel room, or I purchase a cabin on a cruise ship, and it is advertised or offers a balcony, I expect an area that's covered, that I can walk out onto and sit in a chair. According to the 1118 architecture, the papers I just gave you, the recommended four-by-six balcony doesn't even meet the industry standard for a market rate apartment that is four-by-nine feet. And it's not even close to the industry standard of a luxury apartment of five foot, six inches by 12 foot. I would ask that in keeping with the intent of the development agreement, that the balcony size for the apartments within the developer agreement properties meet the luxury standards. That's what the developers' agreement called for, was luxury amenities, luxury standards. Adhering to the development agreement and supporting it through fair enforcement, I believe is the most important point of this issue. If the requirements are compromised once, then it's easy to continue to compromise the thing, and the development agreement will no longer define the quality of city center. We are concerned about litigation.
Paul, you need to wrap it up, please.
Okay. But you've got a $15 million investment, you've already lost one and a half million dollars on the sale. So a little more litigation, should it come, shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
Capps. C-A-P-P-S. Mayor Nelson, esteemed city commissioners, my name is Brian Capps. I am with the Construction Law Firm in Orlando, and I am litigation counsel for Taurus City Center, Apopka City Center LLC. And from my understanding, since its inception of the city center project, Taurus has been a faithful partner with the city in its downtown redevelopment efforts all along. Taurus' normal transactional counsel, Mr. Keating, sent y'all a letter prior to the last meeting. I'm not gonna, you should have it, I'm not going to repeat it, I'm just going to maybe supplement and complement it. The issue, obviously, is fairly narrow one, is what is a balcony? From the perspective of Southwick versus the city and Taurus. This is a door. I think we can all agree, and I don't mean to be flip about this. And this is a railing. And what Southwick would have you believe is that, let's see if I can get this to work, is that you slap a railing on a door, that makes it a balcony. And our opinion is, and I believe this customary interpretation of the word balcony, definitionally, Southwick's counsel just mentioned that. If you go to dictionary.com, you go to merriam-webster.com, they all say that it's a platform enclosed, projecting from a wall, and that it's enclosed by a railing. And I think that was conceded. But what you might have missed is that what is proposed, an 11-inch or 12-inch wide ledge, it's not a platform, it's a ledge. And it does not meet the development agreement requirements. The master architect, Kim McCann, on May 4th, sent y'all a letter saying that these, according to her interpretation, the, all the balconies need to be walked out, and that a Juliet balcony is not permissible. That was what I was demonstrating, that's a Juliet balcony. Juliet balcony is nowhere mentioned in the development agreement. It's not mentioned in the city code anywhere. It, it's not mentioned in the Development Design Guidelines that are Appendix D to the city code. And if you look, consistent with those, you know, normal lay definitions, in, at the design, at the Development Design Guidelines that are attached as the Appendix D to the city code, there's a drawing there, Figure 10. And it shows a porch, which is basically a raised platform above the street, supposed to be 18 inches higher if it's further away from the street. And then above that, it shows a projecting balcony that is covered. That is a platform, truly a platform, not a ledge. And the purpose of that, if you look at the guidelines, is to create a, a transition area or buffer between public and private areas. And in the guidelines, it's called a semi-public space. Now Juliet balcony doesn't create that, doesn't create that transition. It does not comply with the intent of the code. So as a lawyer, we deal a lot with interpretations of language. Typically, the courts will go to common definitions. And it presumes that language has meaning. If it was intended by the parties, that Juliet balconies would be permissible, it would have so said, and it does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. I, I really, I don't live near this, so I don't have a dog in the hunt, but as a citizen and a taxpayer, I've been involved with this downtown city center project the entire time it's gone on. I watched the city throw money in the toilet to buy the property. I watched the city throw money in the toilet as a profit loss when we turned it over to Taurus. I watched somebody, boondoggle somebody into coming down and signing a piece of paper to build these apartments instead of luxury apartments. Paul and Diane Faircloth have been friends of mine all of my life. I have nothing but the greatest respect for them and empathy in what they're dealing with. They verbally asked for density changes, and like many people that have asked for density changes, have been told no, because it doesn't benefit certain individuals, or certain bankers, or certain developers. My point is, how much tax money are we going to continue to throw at this? Now, how many, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars do we have in legal fees? Arguing over balconies? This got done, this got done under this administration. And it's this administration's fault that the rule got pulled over this city's eyes, and we wasted more money down the toilet. Now we're paying legal fees, how long are we going to keep it up until we pay for the whole damn complex out of our city reserve? Somebody needs to wake up, and some kind of compromise needs to be reached, because like Paul said, the apartments, they've reached that, that's inevitable, it's going to happen now. That's a done deal. But we're arguing over balconies, and it's costing the taxpayers tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands. We took advice from Rodriguez, the now-gone city attorney, and lost a case. We're paying other attorneys to handle that litigation. How much litigation do we have to throw money at before somebody uses some common sense and wakes up in this city?
Albert McKemme, 3603 Golden Gem Road. A layperson like myself is obviously confused about what a balcony is, what a balcony isn't. What I'm not, in the slightest bit confused about is continuity. And how you deal with applicants should always be the same way. Every applicant should come here, rather decide now whether it's intent or whether it's language. But I personally don't want to come here every few weeks and see the same, the same arise. I watch it time and time again when there's issues that should have been resolved prior to coming here. So today, all I would ask is if you decide if it's language or if it's intent, let's make that equitable for everyone. Thank you.
Let's be honest, this is nothing about balconies, nothing whatsoever. All you have to do is think back to what this administration said. The mayor said, it's the type of people that this, these apartment would bring. This is the reason he don't want the apartment built. Mr. Faircloth, he lived down there, he, he knows they're coming. But this mayor, if you remember, he said in an open meeting, he wanted the people to live in these apartment that could afford a cup of Starbucks coffee. You remember that? You remember Sixth Street? Where the preachers coming up here begging for land to build houses? Where the preachers up here advocating for this? It's the prejudice of this mayor against marginalized people. The reason, it's not about balconies. Sylvester Hall, I want to echo Mr. Bill. It was the same mayor that went to Tallahassee and asked to stop federal funding for this project. So when we sit here and we go through the process, we don't take none of those things in consideration. We just go through the norm. When we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth. We stop looking for the truth. This has to stop. Procedures matters, principle matters. This is a process that should have been squashed a long time ago. And we had a chance to do that, but the vote failed 3-2. I took note of that. When we want developers, developers to come to the city of Apopka, we want to know that they're going to be held to our guidelines, our rules, procedures, and we want them to come knowing that they will be treated fairly. If we do that, it eliminate what we're going through now. Thank you.
Want to come up, back one more? Give you one more shot at it?
Try it, try it again, Mayor. Stu, I just want to, I-
Sure, sure, absolutely, yeah.
I, I disagree with that. I have the burden of proof in this, and so the way the meeting worked, well, Mayor, I have the burden of proof. And so if this is going to become an open forum where people in the audience get to continue to get up over and over again, I think we're going to be in for quite a long evening. I also would have appreciated, as, you know, one attorney to another, if you had sent me a copy of this letter that Taurus has sent to the city. By the way, Taurus knew when they sold us the property, when they sold it to Wendover, they made money off of it, and they knew that this was for an affordable housing project. So I find it quite rich that they're going to show up today and complain.
Maybe the best course of action is if we maybe discuss it up here, and then if, if attorneys need to come back and speak, we can do that after? Do we want to have that conversation? I don't know what you would plan on-
No, I, I was simply going to, I wasn't even going to address that. But I was going to address one of the questions that came up, and that is, how much money has the city spent in the litigation? I, I don't know the exact number. There is a current award where the city owes my client $250,000 in damages. That was as of the time that this lawsuit was decided on our first count. And we have pending the amount of attorney's fees that are going to be due to my client. So just wanted to answer that. We've provided the balconies. I can pull out the language and we can look at what it exactly says. It doesn't even say that you have to have a balcony on every single unit. We have provided a balcony on every unit that you could provide a balcony on. It is not a Juliet balcony, it is not a faux balcony. It may not be as large as some people may like, but you know what? It may be large enough for the people who, who choose to rent here. So I just submit to you all, we've provided the balconies, we've complied with the development agreement. Please let us move forward with this project.
Okay, we'll close it right for now, and then we need to get back-
Thank you, Mayor.
-one more chance at it. Hey, Commissioner Blaskes, you got any comments, questions, anything for the?
Well, I mean, there's a, certainly the balconies have been such a sticking point, and this has been going on for, I don't know how long, but it, it, the balconies has really been something that everyone has a different definition of what a balcony should be or is. But at this point, I feel that this needs to be compromise between the community development director and the developer, because your development agreement specifically states that it does not have to come to the city council.
But that's what we wanted, that's what, that's what Commissioner Nesta wanted, he wanted to bring it back to the council.
Well, I mean, they can't decide on what a definition of a balcony is.
We're fixing up, we're going-
We're gonna, we're gonna be going round and round at this, this council meeting. I will yield to the other commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, so I, because it's been discussed twice, Mr. Faircloth had done some, some timeline, attorney did a timeline. I punched up a timeline, because I just want to make sure that everybody's crystal- I punched up a timeline, because I just want to make sure that everybody's crystal clear how we've gotten from 2016 to where we're at right now. And I just want to lay all cards on the table, be fully transparent here, because people need to know the facts in this case. If we go, if we go back, I'm not going to go as far back as Mr. Faircloth did, but 2016, in January or February of 2016, prior to my timeline council, the city council approved the original sales and purchase agreement with Torres, between Torres and City of Apopka. In July 2016, city council that I was now part of approved the developers' agreement between Torres and the City of Apopka. Exhibits F and G, which outline design standards and permitted uses, are the same now as originally published, meaning both parties were in agreement. Main verbiage to highlight is luxury or upscale and balcony or porch for the design standards and residential multifamily non-subsidized market rent for permitted uses. Fast forward until 2019, there was really no activity within the city center over that period of time. Representatives from Torres at that period of time, I forget the exact month, had contacted both city staff and council representatives, I know I can only speak for myself, to voice displeasure and the potential of 24 townhomes proposed to be built on Sixth Street by the Hannibal Square Land Trust, making it known that such a development would jeopardize certain letters of intent they had secured for the city center project, including a national coffee brand that still has not come to fruition. Fast forward to July 2020, the current administration led discussions and council approved an amendment to the original developers' agreement. And I think the driver of these changes were primarily related to the new hotel that was being built, but really additional negotiations could have been had at that point since the developers' agreement was opened at that time. During that amendment and the current version of that, Exhibits F and G that I described before that set the design standards and their permitted uses did not change, they have not changed. In July or August of 2020, the Hilton Garden Inn was open. In November of 2020, and this is a point of importance here, Mr. Hitt, as well as other staff, contributed and signed the Florida Housing Financing Corporation Local Government Verification Application, which indicated no restrictions by which the applicant would or could be limited, and the Florida Housing Financing Corporation deals in subsidizing these types of rent-controlled projects. No letter of dispute was penned by the mayor or other staff at that time, nor was any member of the council made aware of this document signing. This milestone set what's today in motion. Fast forward to June of 2021, the Florida Housing Financing Corporation awarded the applicant $8.6 million in state funding for this project. In September of 2021, the Orange County Board of County Commissioners approved the grant allocations of $2 million to Southwick Development. And then sometime between September and October, media outlets started picking up the story about the funding of this project, at which time commissioners were made first aware of this subsidized nature of the funding. Over the next two, call it two months, the topic of this development is discussed in both city council meetings, both in October. Obviously, media was present in September, the first meeting in October, the second meeting in October. It culminated in the fact that Orange County Mayor Demings had penned a letter to Mayor Nelson with the documentation of the application, because during the October 13th meeting, the mayor had reiterated that the city had no knowledge of the subsidized housing intention explicitly or as otherwise would have been inferred based on that FHFC application. In November 3rd, again, and local media outlets covered this, some members brought up concerns during the council meeting, myself included, to which I've been fully transparent with this applicant. Had it been me on this dais in May of 2022, I would have voted in the majority not to approve this project, because I did think that I was outside the spirit of the developers' agreement at the time. But that's a Torres and Wendover discussion, not for us to, well, it was for us to consider, and the council did that in May, when it was brought to the council's attention. On November 5th, even though there was media coverage in September, October, and the beginning parts of November, on November 5th, Torres sold the property to Wendover Housing Partners, to which Torres had purchased that property less than a week prior. On February of 2022, at a ceremony, a ceremony was held for breaking, and I quote this, "breaking ground on the restaurant and retail phase of construction," as quoted by a Torres representative in local media report. Also in that same report by a Torres representative was the touting of six to seven tenants, a high-end Italian restaurant, a 195-unit apartment complex, and a Wynn Dixie as a future resident of the city center, touting the celebratory environment that we were in that day. On May 2022, council on a 3-2 vote rejects the request to change developers' agreement language to remove the non-subsidized market rent permitted use. And during that meeting, they also wanted to negotiate terms on the balcony issue, in terms of the number of balconies within the project. This was, of course, resulted in a no vote by the council 3-2, which led to the litigation that was discussed earlier, to which the courts decided in the favor of Wendover in November of 2022. The only thing I could speculate on the concept plan that Mr. Hitt put up earlier is, in May, during those conversations, I know that within the packet material, the applicant wanted to have balconies for a certain number of units within the thing, to which Mr. Hitt and I have on several conversations over the last month or two on this topic, has acquiesced to say that he would have been okay with doing that had it been a better balcony product. But the point being is that I think there was time for negotiation going all the way back to May of 2022. November 2022, court decides in favor of Wendover that the type of development that they're trying to construct cannot be prohibited based on the non-subsidized market rent terms of the developers' agreement. Again, that developers' agreement was language that we and Torres freely entered into. It's a stipulation that Torres freely disregarded when selling the property to Wendover, when Wendover Housing Partners, it's no secret what type of housing communities that they construct. April 7th, the applicant's council sends a letter outlining key milestones and indicates open items have been resolved in terms of their interpretation of the balcony and the other luxury items. On April 26th, the mayor had penned the unilateral letter to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation Board of Directors, outside the knowledge of the commissioners, asking the board to reject outright the project at their April 28th scheduled meeting, amongst other things, the balconies, but there was other things represented there as too. On April 28th, 2023, the Florida Housing Finance Corporation Board neither cited the letter nor pulled the item from consent for further discussion, and the item is passed unanimously to approve the applicant's request. In May 16th, council for Torres, as just mentioned, penned a letter to council representatives to render their interpretation of the balcony or porch language within the developers' agreement, but did not render an opinion on the stipulation around non-subsidized market rent apartments. So with all that history, and so feel free to correct my facts as I have them here, but it serves to highlight some of the inconsistencies that we're hearing from the three parties that are involved in this whole process. The City of Apopka, Torres Southern Investments, as well as Wendover. All that boiled down and simmered down is, we're right back to where we're at on this matter, is the interpretation of a balcony. So when you go and you do a search within our land development code or our code ordinances within the City of Apopka, and you type in balcony, there's about 10 responses that come back. Not one of those responses has dimensions, specifications, anything that would otherwise give clear indication about which definition that we've all heard in this room already today is the generally accepted, commonly understood size of a balcony. And it's interesting that we get the email that we did this morning from Torres, right, at 11:30 this morning, because in the lead-in packet, staff is recommending four by six. The Torres representatives are, you know, saying five to six feet deep, 12 feet wide. So as you can see from where we're sitting up here as a city council, which definition are we using? And I get it that Torres is trying to kind of say, well, you guys stay with the spirit of the developers' agreement, but I would argue that that spirit was broken in November of 2021, and it was enabled going back to November of 2020. So where I struggle is that we don't have anywhere within the developers' agreement, our land development code definition section. If you do a search of luxury or upscale within our land development code, there's no hits on that, especially as it relates to design standards from multifamily or balconies and what should look like, et cetera. My only question is, you know, this keeps on getting a hot topic, what was visualized here on this versus what, and you can't see me, on the balcony railing itself that you've described, the smaller ones, is there side railings that? Because, again, this goes back to the various interpretations of the word Juliette balcony. Some of them say that's a complete false balcony where the railing sits flush with the threshold of the door or sliding glass window or whatever you want to call it. But this one has an actual protrusion or whatever word you want to use here. But then, again, beyond that, now we've got to consider, okay, well, what's considered a ledge versus a platform? How far down the rabbit hole do we have to go here? I just don't see how we can come to a consensus about what is or what is not a balcony, other than, you know, the most basic definition, a protrusion of a thing outside the general facade of the building. Again, I look at this, and I, trust me, this piece of business today was hard, because I have so much respect for Mr. Faircloth, I have so much respect for the people that are in Charter Oaks. I hate that we're getting to the point now where we're disputing this topic based off of a balcony, when there were so many steps that, had it been fully transparent with this commission, that we may not have gotten to where we're at today. But I just don't know how staff is going to defend four by six when even, you know, our partners in the developers' agreement are saying something, you know, 50% larger.
Mr. Nesta?
I'll be a little more brief than that.
Sorry, I just wanted to, the timeline's important.
I've got a timeline that's a little different than yours, so I want to, yeah.
No, my comments are brief. There has been a lot of back and forth with this development, obviously. I haven't been from the inception, but was a part of it, obviously, starting last year. Although I don't agree with how Wendover's been treated by staff or by this administration, I still, the industry standard for a balcony is much bigger than what this is. Your size 14 shoe is not going to fit on that balcony, whatever shoe is.
That is 14, by the way.
So it's just not going to fit. And again, I'm not advocating for the Faircloth, I'm not advocating for any other resident other than the ones that are actually going to be using these balconies. Those are who we should be advocating for and thinking about that, the quality of what that lifestyle looks like. And just because it's affordable doesn't mean it needs to be cheap. And that's all this comes down to, is it's cheaper, obviously, to make this balcony. And although we do have different variations of what a balcony can be, I want what's best for the residents in that community. And if I was living in that community, I'd want a balcony, all day, every day. I think that just, so yes, I understand we have varying definitions, and we've gone through all of those, and we can take a deeper dive in all of them if you'd want, but for me, we need balconies on the majority of the units. I'm not stuck on 100%, but there needs to be a little more give and take. And again, I understand, too, that there was a lot of games that were played as well that got us here. So I apologize for that, even though it wasn't my fault, but I think we need true balconies, industry standard. If a layperson comes in and wants to lease a unit, what does that look like, and it's not 11 inches?
All right, I'm going to go give you kind of my, I've got a little different timeline, but I think a couple of things I'll add to what you-
Sure.
Southwick applied for sale financing on 11/18/2020. The purchase and sale agreement between Torres and Southwick signed on 11/18/2020, closing date 6/30/2021. They had two additional 60-day extensions with a $50,000 escrow deposit per the extension on 8/30 and 10/30, so that's when they closed on the 11, one, excuse me, 11/2 date. So it's, and I, back to Commissioner Becker's point, I think, I still haven't quite got this all figured out, is that Torres, obviously, with your comments about when, with Hannibal Square, you know, he was screaming at us that we shouldn't approve that. So completely agree, Torres, why would they sell to an affordable housing developer? And then, conversely, why would Wendover take a piece of property knowing there's a DA on it? Neither side makes any sense to me. Why would they, why would they sell it to an affordable housing developer? And then why would an affordable housing developer buy it with those conditions? Yet you add to that, though, I think that although Wendover is an affordable, that's what they're known for, is affordable housing, they do have some luxury apartments. So it's not out of realm that they could build luxury apartments. So I think, you know, the spirit of the sale by Torres was for luxury apartments, because I think what you, my vision would be is you're coming down McGee, and you've got the fountain which we upgraded, which we all, well, the three of us upgraded. We got that nice fountain, the visual to look up there would be to see those balconies overlooking the apartment complex. So I think some of that, it still, I can't, you know, wrap my head around why that was there. The, you're right, they filed, the Southwick filed the judgment against the subsidized affordable housing. We've never doubted that that, you know, that, we lost that, we moved on. But it does say in the developers' agreement, so I don't know that we're still, I mean, they keep talking about we've lost the court case. I don't know that we've lost the court case, because in the DA agreement, it states that you're, you know, you can't sue each other. So we'll see whether, you know, whether that really is, you know, the case. Obviously, the courts will decide. But I think when you look at, you know, some other properties, you know, when we talk about the delays that we've, they've incurred because of us, just want to give you a couple of numbers here. On 6/15/2022 DRC pre-submital review, there was a 54-day gap between the plan's middle. DRC on 8/24, 57-day gap. Then on 11/16, another DRC meeting, an 86-day gap. So if you take those 197 days of gap, now we're down to about 257 days. We just approved, and they're building now the Alta East Shore, which their total days was 416 days. So it's not like that we have held them up based on, you know, trying to slow down the process. They've been a bigger part of the problem than we have. Then it comes back to what balconies are and what luxury balconies are, because I think the four by six, which is what, you know, Jim Hitt's talking about, is a standard balcony, not a luxury balcony. My ask of the city council is just to come up with a square footage, and if you want to, if you want to round it across the, you know, if it's 50 square feet, so it'd be five by 10 across all of them, then if they want a couple of them that are smaller, some of them that are bigger, if you came out to 50 square feet, you know, pick a number. I think that would be, you know, something that we send back to Jim Hitt to, as they come back with the actual plan, that we move forward with the plan based on an average square footage of a balcony.
Again, this is a slippery slope, right? Because we're making what I would perceive to be land development code policy on the fly, not giving the public opportunity through multiple hearings, like we have with all the glitch amendments that we have done with the land development code. You know, again, we could all, four, five of us go away and come back with different dimensions, clearly, like Mr. Hitt has, what Torres has, and then when you go out to the realm of the world that's out there, every, whether it's a formal definition from Encyclopedia Britannica, if it's some place that prefabs balconies, if it's someplace that, you know, is in Georgia versus California. I went down a rabbit hole last night where it's like, these types of balconies, people seem valuing them because they bring an outside feeling into their living room, just for the sheer nature of the doors being open, and you have that balcony space that funnels in there. So again, it's just this preferential thing. So if we were all sitting here and say, okay, we've got takeaway work again, we're delaying another thing. I'm not sure, I don't know- I'm not sure, I don't know if the applicant is going to explore that or not. Who's to say that staff agrees with our interpretation if we can't get consensus up here? It just, we're, and I go back, and I had this conversation with Mr. Hitt, too. There's, luxury is not defined by the balcony. I mean, I would argue that all the apartments that were requiring balconies on now, and maybe it's voluntarily so, they're much nicer because they're enclosed, a lot of them are screened, but they're covered. But this isn't the requirement here. It's not a covered balcony. It's just, we don't like the size of the ledge that's protruding out of the side of the building. And, again, we, I had this argument back when we were approving homes with 40-foot wide lots, right? Like, I personally wouldn't want a neighborhood with straight zoning with 40-foot wide lots. But then the argument was made, well, millennials like, they don't like the yard, and there's reasons why people want this versus that. We're getting into the same territory here. There's luxury apartments that were built just a short few years ago, Martin Ridge Apartments, the first phase of that stuff. All of those buildings are without balconies. But I guarantee you, anybody that lives in there or goes there would say that those are luxury products. So, I struggle with this one, because, again, we could sit here and argue five council meetings in a row, and I don't think that we would get to a true consensus about what constitutes a micro balcony, a normal balcony, a luxury balcony, upscale, you know, ta-da. It's a slippery slope. But what will happen is, and this is what I said the past two or three meetings, I've been fully transparent on this topic, is if we sit here and take our stance and say we agree with you, and this creates a, an action, I mean, clearly, there's a court reporter for a reason. This will go to the courts again. And so, we have to sit here and decide, where do we think the courts will render opinion on this particular topic? Will they take staff's interpretation of the four or five sources that they've used? Are they going to take the applicant's four or five sources that they've used? Are they going to take our primary relationship in the developers agreement with the four or five sources that they have? My hope and my desire would be the courts would say, what does their land development code say? What does the developers agreement say? And if it doesn't show specificity, you know, all they have to do is meet the basic tenants of a balcony. And I don't think that that's, there's any sort of commonality in terms of what the size is, especially if you matrixed it into what's considered luxury, common, small, medium, and large.
Well, in the developments agreement was, they considered the actual unit to be of luxury contacts, which the applicant has satisfied. Everything that was required in order to make the apartment luxury. Remember, it was the, have a washer and dryer, a community room, Wi-Fi, all that was satisfied. So, for me, that was a luxury apartment. Then the balconies became a separate conversation. So, I kind of agree with Commissioner Becker. It's not that we're siding with Wendover or with the residents of Charter Oaks, and of course, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Faircloth or our city is, what is the definition of a balcony?
Yeah, you got, and we'll let the two attorneys one more round, and then we'll wrap this up.
Well, just real quick, one of the things that I did put in, Commissioner Becker, I said at least a four by six. And that was before we got this letter from the Torres attorney regarding, or the, I guess it was a.
Architect, maybe.
The architect regarding a base balcony versus a luxury balcony. I was just looking for something that was a regular balcony, whether it was recessed underneath roof or if it was extended out. And then, when you put balcony up on top of balcony, you end up having a shelf of some sort above your head. So, again, I was looking at what the development agreement was entered, and the intent of the development agreement was for a balcony, which is a usable space, just like a porch. You wouldn't go outside your porch with a one-foot porch and stand on your back porch and put a chair on a one-foot porch. The same, to me, would be expected for a balcony, is it's a usable space. It's outdoor, just like a porch. All right. And I tried, and I did try to provide some different, you know, definitions and examples of uses of what a balcony is. And, you know, the majority of them, you know, it says, this is under Encyclopedia Britannica, which you had mentioned, says, "A balcony serves to enlarge the living space and range of activities possible in a dwelling without a garden or a lawn. In many apartment houses, the balcony is partly recessed to provide both sunshine and shelter or shade." There's another portion in here that talks about balconies are used, are mostly used as small gardening points, relaxing centers where homeowners can contact, can get contact with the outdoors if the size allows a sitting space. Basically, it's often, this is under, I think it was under the balcony Miriam Webster, often have breakfast out on the balcony. And you can't do that without.
But the point is, is that each one that you bring up, and each one that all three of these parties bring up, can be contradictory in nature. So, which one, which, in the grand scheme of things, which is the highest order of balcony determinators? You know, that's probably not even a word. But, yeah, and that's where we stand, is it's, we don't have a clear definition of what a balcony is.
True, yeah. Yeah, our land development code, it doesn't show any style balcony that the applicant has put in. All the pictures that we have, and somebody mentioned one of the figures, they're all larger, larger style balconies, usable balconies. There's nothing that shows the other type of balcony that's being proposed with this. Well, one thing I did want to ask is the balconies that are on the side, do you know how many are on the corner units total, offhand?
Twenty percent of the units are corner units.
Okay. So, those have balconies. So, that's, I mean, well, the full-size balcony, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Mr. Capps, why don't you come up? Give us four minutes, and then we will wrap it up.
Okay. I want to go discuss a couple of the points that Commissioner Becker raised. First of all, the issue of why would Torres have sold to a subsidized housing agency? I think, having only been involved in this issue and dispute for a week or so, but my understanding is that Torres acted in reliance on the non-subsidized market rate restriction that was in the development agreements. And that's why. They thought that they could sell to Wendover. And as I believe the mayor aptly put it, there's no prohibition against Wendover's having created luxury apartments, notwithstanding it may have been out of its lane, and that may have done so previously. With respect to the lawsuit, what I've looked at, it shows that these two issues came up before you last year, I believe. And you denied the request to get rid of the non-subsidized market rate restriction. And I believe you denied the request that the balconies be limited to 18% of the units, of the 192 units. Well, the non-subsidized market rate restriction, that was the subject of the lawsuit. You're right. But the balcony one was not. And it is not. And that suit is, if I understand correctly, is going to trial on September 11th. So, I don't know how Southwick would, I know there was a threat made previously that an injunction would be sought against the city if it were to enforce the balcony requirement. I'm not sure how they would do that, since the litigation's already in place. There's already been a judgment as to count two. Count three, which was for injunctive relief and declaratory relief, was dismissed voluntarily by Southwick. And they got a trial coming up. So, I'm not sure how they're going to shoehorn this issue into there. But I'm only here to talk about the balcony. I know that Southwick's counsel thought it was rich that I somehow would be raising the issue of subsidized housing. I'm not. That's water under the bridge. That's been decided by the court. It's a judgment. Maybe it will be appealed, maybe it won't. I don't know. Your attorney, if you get a new one, will tell you that. But Mr. Nesta raised a great question. This is, having been decided by the court that this restriction against subsidized housing, against subsidized housing, the requirement that be market rate, is a violation of the Florida Fair Housing Act and is unenforceable. Apparently, that's, as it stands now, that's what you got, if you've got subsidized housing. Why can those tenants not have the luxury amenities that the development agreements called for? Why would you oppose, now that you know that there are going to be subsidized tenants in it? Why would you oppose them having a place to put their, probably smaller than size 14 feet, up under shade? Put the table out there. Why are they not entitled to that? Why? Because they're subsidized tenants? Is that what you're saying? You've gone a long way toward wringing your hands about the fact that you've got to make a decision. That is part and parcel of what you do every day. Yes, this is, is it ambiguous? We don't believe it's ambiguous. Southwick's trying to make it seem ambiguous because they're trying to say, well, anything constitutes a balcony. But it's your job to interpret it, and you're entitled to interpret it as the development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Capps. Okay. Wrap it up.
I will wrap it up, Mayor. So, I, as you can imagine, I disagree. You don't just get to interpret balcony any way you want to interpret balcony. And so, when this issue first came up, I did what you did, Mr. Becker. At first, I called my architect. I said, how big is a balcony supposed to be? His answer to me, and he'll stand up here and say it, is there is no definition. I said, is there a definition in the Florida Building Code of how big a balcony needs to be? No. Is there one in the state fire code? No. Is there one in the development agreement? No. Is there one in the city's rules and regulations, land development code? Is there anything in the comp plan? There is nothing that states the size. Now, maybe that's something in the future you all may want to consider as you move forward. But right now, we have spent a significant amount of money getting this far with our site plans, our conceptual site plans, and our building permits, based on the definitions that were afforded to us through the state codes, your codes, your comprehensive plan, and this development agreement. And thank you, Ms. Valquez, because you are absolutely correct. There is a laundry list of items that we are required to provide to be luxury. We have provided every one of those and more. It states we have to provide balconies. We are providing balconies. Again, we, it, we do not believe that it will be beneficial to continue to go back and forth on this. With all due respect, with staff, I believe they are looking to you for direction. We would love nothing more than to deliver these luxury apartments as defined by the DA with these balconies. I appreciate you all's time, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I said, I think the person here who may know the most about it is an actual licensed architect. And if you have any questions for him, he will certainly make himself available.
One quick question. The DA agreement that, you know, obviously, you knew back in, what year was that? You signed the letter of intent.
My client signed the letter of intent with Torres.
Right. Did you, with the Florida Housing Authority, did they have the DA agreement when you gave the, when the agreement was signed by you to give to the Florida Housing Authority for your funding, was the DA a part of that initial package?
No, that's why we read the DA, which is why we went to your staff and asked them, can we build?
When was your first contact with, okay, you signed the agreement with Torres on So, and your application for financing was on 11/18. So, when did you come to staff to say, to talk about the DA agreement?
I did not personally come to staff, Mayor, but I believe Jim could tell you when he executed the affidavit stating that we could build affordable housing, actually 195 units of affordable housing on this piece of property.
So, you didn't, you didn't, then, the DA agreement did not go to the Florida Housing Authority?
The DA agreement didn't, the land development code didn't, the comprehensive plan didn't. We actually took the affidavit, which is the only thing the Florida Housing Finance Corp requests. I've done affordable housing projects all over the state, and we don't send them all of the codes. They ask us to send two pieces of paper related to land development.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
Can I ask you this real quick? Is there anywhere in the middle that you guys would meet, or is it, as presented, it's either that or nothing?
We have worked as hard as we could to compromise. We did. We 100% came and asked that 18% of the units have balconies. That was turned down. So, we then did 100% submit for Juliet balconies. They didn't have sliding doors, and they didn't have the protrusions. Jim said that's not a balcony. So, then we came back, we added the projection, we added the sliding doors, and we added the railings. So, we believe that we now meet the requirements. We're not pushing for, you know, this supposed Juliet balcony.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I just want to address the attorney's remarks. Again, I go back to the idea that we're not forcing anybody to live anywhere. They can make the decision that they want to live there or not. And they can look at the product that they see and determine for themselves whether or not that's something sufficient for their needs. But again, I go back to the example that I used before. Is Martin Ridge not a luxury apartment complex because it lacks?
No, I don't think they, do they, Jim, do they?
There was, there was no development agreement or anything like that for any of the other apartment complexes. This is a unique case because it was a development agreement for the city.
Yeah, I'm not talking about code adherence. I'm just talking quality of life. It's considered a luxury apartment, and it does not have one single balcony.
But I think you're, this DA didn't say luxury balconies. It said luxury items and balconies. So, don't, you can't cross those over. Yes, most luxury apartments, whatever, have balconies, but those are two separate items.
But I'm, I'm.
They checked off luxury.
Yeah. And I've got to, I've got to think about this in the terms of, again, we are on the hook for damages already in the formal litigation. If this goes for further litigation, we are putting at jeopardy taxpayer dollars to fight this, because, again, if they go and just fight on the subject of balconies, it's going to be probably a similar type of litigation that happened with the determination about the non-subsidized. But what we put at jeopardy is, this applicant has $10.6 million worth of funding that they've secured. If we put that in jeopardy whatsoever, as this council, I kind of have a hard time feeling that they're just going to take their ball and go home. So, I'm just, I want to make sure that this council's aware that it's not just a balcony issue here. This is, you know, some punitive damages that could be.
And I don't disagree with you, but what I, the one comment I do want to kind of rebut a little bit, though, that you said is that somebody can pick somebody else to live, where else is the affordable housing? Where else are affordable products that, so this is kind of our only, that, if you make an average salary at a teacher, a firefighter, a police officer, there's not that many options. We know where the market's at. So, although, yes, they can choose other places, in a pocket, it's limited. So, I disagree with you on that a little bit. But also, the costs that we've already paid are sunk cost. I mean, that, it is what it is. And.
And I would even disagree that we've lost the lawsuit. I think if you look at the DA agreement and the talks.
Well, I don't want to go down that alley, though. I don't want to, we're going to assume that.
Okay. Worst case.
Yes, that, those are sunk costs. So, again, I want what's best for the residents that are going to be there. If you were living there, if I were living there, you'd want that. So, that's what I'm advocating for. And if we can meet a little bit more in the middle of developer, I would love to do that as well. So, I hear what you're saying, too, that let's not waste taxpayer dollars unnecessarily on something that we may lose at the end anyways. So, I hear you on that. But.
But you just, but you just mentioned that in the DA's agreement, it was luxury apartments and a balcony. So, here goes that word "and," doesn't say luxury balcony. He, the developer did provide all the luxury amenities inside the unit.
Agreed. I'm not debating that. That's what I'm saying, we're trying, you, we're putting those two words together, and they're not together. I disagree that what they're presenting are balconies. You're saying they are balconies. It's up to interpretation as a. It's up to interpretation of the problem. We're both right. Both sides are right right now because how they define it and how we, everyone defines it, each individual person, is a balcony. If I'm renting a unit or staying at a hotel, and they tell me it has a balcony, and I can't step out on it, for me, that's not a balcony. So it's, I don't know what the next step here is. I don't know, so...
We got to give staff a recommendation.
And if, because we're, look like we're split here, what does that do? Because I don't want to delay this anymore either. I don't want to...
I'm with you.
I don't need her to keep coming back up. I'm just getting very respectfully, very respectfully. And they don't, they want to start their project and get it done, too, so...
But the residents have a choice of the apartments that they want to live in. Now, the other thing we don't have is the structure. Probably an apartment with a balcony is going to have a higher lease rate than the one that has sort of the smaller balcony. So there's a choice, but that's not up to us to decide that.
There's not an affordable choice. That's where I'm looking at now. Now, although, whether, how, we're doing an affordable product, and again, it should be what's best for the residents that are living there.
Yeah, well, they, when you're talking about affordable, it's how many two-bedroom apartments, how many one-bedroom apartments. They're all going to be different lease amounts.
Yeah, but it's also based on their income.
Right.
Well, I'm looking for...
But that's, you see, that's not for us to decide at this point.
Well, yeah, I mean, it...
No, it's not for us to decide.
Either way, even if we come back and we have guidance on how big a balcony is, again, it's going to be perceived as we're changing our code on the fly.
Mm-hmm.
That's a very slippery slope that we're going to deal with. Why would we do that? Again, it's not, it's not enumerated or specified within the developer's agreement. Maybe it's just a deficiency, both the developer's agreement as well as the code.
It absolutely is.
Right.
I mean, it was another blind spot that we're realizing.
I mean, but we, it's like when we first passed the land development code and, or it was a form-based code up at Kelly Park DRA. And, you know, floor area ratio had to immediately be changed officially because publics had very specific requirements for them to come into us. We didn't, on that application, change the floor area ratio. We changed the KR, the form-based code, to accommodate what publics wanted to do. So it's not like we did that on an application-by-application basis, which I think we're getting into here. And so, again, I would, from my point of view, it's...
I would disagree only in the KPI because we had, we had, this was what was in place, we changed what was in place. This is a nebulous, if you, we don't have a design standard.
Right, exactly. We don't, I was using that as an example, but the point here is, if you go through our land development code here, from a pictorial perspective, they've got, you've got specifications for a lot of different things, setbacks, what a portico might be, or a porch, or what have you. What you don't have is any specification whatsoever, none about what a balcony is. And so how can we give guidance outside of a formal, we are going to update the land development code on an application-by-application basis? Because then, you know, that's the slippery slope that we run into. And I just, we take our lumps here, fix the code, but anything beyond that, I feel like it's going to be punitive, and we're just going to, on the back end of this thing, we set ourselves up for further damages in terms of going the litigation route. I see it more as saving for taxpayers versus anything else. Again, I, I, again, I keep on going back to Martin Ridge. Again, and I've been completely transparent with this applicant. I did not want this project to happen. Like, affordable rent-controlled housing in the middle of our city center. I remember we had a council meeting where Mr., where Ryan got up and talked about, oh, well, they're going to have extra, you know, disposable income to spend, and that, no, I don't believe that for a second. But again, that ship has sailed. I've driven through other Wendover developments, the one over here off Thompson Road, that's another development that is without balcony. Ever since that, that complex has been built, the landscaping has been pristine. I drove through there many times, many parts of the day. You have people that are, families playing out in the little soccer field that they got a little left over there, can't see the courtyard because it's surrounded, but a very familial type of environment. The landscaping's always nice whenever I've driven through there. I doubt that anybody that's out playing and enjoying that complex is saying, you know what, damn it, this would be so much better had I have a 12-foot balcony versus, you know, something that I can open my door and just endure that, enjoy that. Or, so it's very subjective, I guess. But I just think that we're going to get to a point where this is going to go the litigation route based off of our findings here, setting a direction, and if we do that, there's just, we don't, the, the cost is unknown at this point.
It, if I may, at this stage, the, the project does have, it's got two buildings that are four stories. One building going along Alabama is, it's a three-story building. I just counted, I had the layout and the number of units that have the, what I would call a walkout balcony, and there's 35 of those on the corner units. So, so there's 35 units, which is very close to what was originally proposed, was the 36 units at the development agreement that was turned down. All the items have been satisfied except for the balcony issue. We can't go back into our land development code at this stage and apply any changes to this, and we also can't really go back into the development agreement and make any changes to that that would also apply to this. So either type of an amendment, granted, I believe that our land development code, we could probably put in some standards for balconies so that we have those in our codes for any other, any other changes or any other improvements. But at this stage, I believe that the style balcony that they've got, we don't really have, it doesn't sound like we've got any, anywhere to go with those in terms of approvals or not approvals. And I'm, kind of, as you mentioned, Mayor, it's, we've got to make a decision into this as to whether or not we're going to allow this or take it a step further. Which I don't necessarily want, by the way.
All right, so I'm looking for some direction, somebody make, Mr. Wood, do you want to?
Again, I've, I've said the same thing the past three meetings. I don't think that we stand up in court if we arbitrarily give a number and try and pass it off as, that's our requirement. So I would, as long as the balconies, the smaller balconies protrude, are fully enclosed and railing, and the other ones that are offset on the other items that are larger meet the same specifications, I just don't see how we win this one if we go back to litigation. So that would be my preference.
So is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, so we got, so I guess in the motion, there's 35 full corner units, there are three better ones. And then, I guess the rest would be the Juliette balconies.
Or that style.
But not true.
Not, not, no.
I won't say that on the record.
The balcony that the applicant approved, had sent in for.
Right, what they...
So, so wait a minute, what, what now? I'm sorry.
The, it would be the, 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 the way the applicant had applied for, which is basically one-foot sill with a, with enclosed railing.
That's what I'm saying. So 35 full balconies, and then the rest would be Juliette.
Well, it's not, it's not called a Juliette balcony, not officially, but the applicant-proposed balcony.
Good. I won't use the term Juliette. The only time I'll use the term Juliette, if the railing is within the threshold of the opening, and there's nothing that protrudes.
Correct.
So I, again, my interpretation is, these are all balconies, they're just different-sized balconies.
Correct. It's the, what I said before, it's the applicant-proposed balcony.
And the balcony, the applicant balcony is 12 inches?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
On, on the, on 36 ones.
Yes, correct. Yeah, the other balconies, by the way, they're five foot eight inches by about 13 feet. So the corner units have, have a substantial-sized balcony.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
A second.
A second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So two to two. All right. Okay, move on.
So where does that leave us? I mean, I don't want to say move on, but where does that leave us as a counsel, and where does this leave us?
Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Well, I guess it means that we just go back and continue to guess what size a balcony. That's all I know to do, either do that or go to a judge and show a judge that the word said balcony, you guys gave us no definition, and you're just asking us to guess. So we're, we're really at a loss, Commissioner, as to what comes next.
Thank you.
If I understand correctly, as part of existing litigation by Southland...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Against the city, part of the pre-tribal trial order, parties are required to mediate still, right?
Come to the microphone, come to the microphone. Start over.
Okay. My understanding from the litigation, I'm not involved in it because Torres is not a party, but my understanding is that there is, in anticipation of this September 11th trial, the parties have been ordered by Judge Deborah Beamer to mediate. So maybe there is a, an opportunity in that context to talk about this further. So I'm just throwing that out there. If the parties can agree to that, then, then...
I'll be happy to share with you what the mediation is on. We're mediating the damages. So we're mediating, thank you, we're mediating how much attorney's fees you guys have to pay our law firm for this, so, yeah, we're...
All right, we're good, we're good, thank you. All right, we're done. Okay. Okay, next up...
I need to take at least a five-minute break, or a two-minute break or whatever, I need to take that.
Okay.
Come up. Awarded contract for ITB 2023 A 24. Is that you, Richard or Blanche?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Richard Earp, City Engineer. This is one Blanche and I worked on together. I can give you the presentation and then if you have any questions for us, probably be the, the fastest way to move forward. This one's a feel-good project. This is a community development block grant program, CRA sidewalk project. This is phase one of two. The project summary is, the project objective is to provide complete sidewalk network to ensure connection and safety of the residents. The funding is provided by the Community Development Block Grant Program entirely for this project. This is phase one of a two-phase project, and I'll show you a graphic on the next slide. This phase one, there's a description of the area that it covers there. Again, I'll show you a graphic in a moment. And this phase one sidewalk project includes about 5800 linear feet of ADA compliant concrete sidewalk with some driveways, ramps and other sidewalk-associated improvements. So the area, the area in purple on this is the phase one area. And I'll give you more detail about where these specific sidewalks are in a second. There's the next slide with the actual graphic showing where the sidewalks are. And Blanche and I, and then the, the, the request is that Blanche would like to award the construction contract to the low bidder on the, on the project. And we're here if you have any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Susan. So sorry. Any questions for Richard or for Blanche? Because we, and can you just tell us about the phase two, just so that, I know it's coming, but.
I'll, I'll go back. Phase two is the area that's in green and it's, it's a similar project with, with a similar number of sidewalks.
Okay, so there's phase one and there's, and there's phase two. Okay. So any questions for Richard or for Blanche? Good? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve. Let's see here. ITB 2023 dash A dash 24.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nestor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, public hearing ordinance number 3006.
Ordinance number 3006. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka. By amending MAP 1 dash A, no, MAP 1 dash 1 dash A, Policy 3.1.8 point double I of the future land use element by extending the State Route 429, US 441 area map to include 750 and 922 Plymouth-Sorrento Road for 13.05 plus or minus acres, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Jean?
Good afternoon. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request accept the first reading of ordinance number 3006 and approve transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, amending comprehensive plan future land use element policy 3.1.822, high-density residential 25 and MAP 1 dash 1A. The subject properties are located west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, south of South Fork Road and east of State Route 429, approximately 13.05 acres in size. 922 Plymouth-Sorrento Road, the northerly parcel, has a future land use designation of agriculture and within the T transitional zoning district. 750 Plymouth-Sorrento Road has a future land use designation of commercial and within the CC, Community Commercial Zoning District. The commercial future land use and zoning entitlements permits this particular parcel up to about 100,000 square feet of commercial use, as well as eligible for the newly adopted Senate Bill 102, also known as the Live Local Act, which will be effective beginning July 1st, 2023. The Act has a provision that municipality must administratively authorize a proposed residential or mixed-use project on any parcel zoned as commercial, industrial, mixed-use without any comprehensive plan amendments, rezoning or other special approvals needed, provided that the, that the project contains at least 40% affordable units at a density that does not exceed the highest density allowed on any parcel for residential uses allowed, and there are also other provisions in addition to. The project still must satisfy all other applicable land development regulations. The Live Local Act also provides that municipality must authorize proposed multifamily and mixed-use residential projects as an allowable use in said zoning district based on other certain conditions, such as the percentage of affordable units for a period of 30 years. On the other hand, the city's comprehensive plan includes HDR 25 future land use designation established under ordinance number 2747, adopted by City Council on May 26, 2020, allows a maximum of 25 dwelling units per acre. This was adopted based on ongoing development trends and market demands for multifamily development, particularly multi-story apartment buildings, as the need exists for higher-density residential development where transportation facilities and infrastructure show the potential to support the residential density increase and compatibility with the area is demonstrated. The applicant intends to construct a multifamily development with a proposed density of 19 dwelling units per acre, therefore requesting to amend the said policy, Policy 3.1H of the future land use element. The applicant also requests to extend the boundary of MAP 1 dash 1A of the comprehensive plan to make the subject properties eligible for HDR 25 future land use designation. HDR 25 is compatible with the area because parcels on the north of the subject properties are within the delineated area eligible to have said future land use designation. Subject properties are in close proximity to State Route 429, the Floridian Town Center in the northwest, which comprises a mix of commercial and high-density residential uses. Additionally, an approved high-density residential development within unincorporated Orange County is located on the northeast of the subject property. This application is also being processed simultaneously with an application to amend the future land use map from agriculture and commercial to HDR 25, which is the next item on the agenda. DRC recommends approval, however, the police chief has concerns regarding land use compatibility. At its meeting on May 9th, 2023, Planning Commission on a six-to-one vote found the request compatible, incompatible with the surrounding area and recommended to deny the amendment to the said policy, as well as the map of the comprehensive plan, and denied the transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Development. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3006 and approve the transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
I, I just need to disclose that I did meet with the developer, the attorney and the engineer last Friday regarding this.
We met on May 23rd, 1 o'clock here at City Hall.
We met as well?
Yeah, same here.
Okay, all right.
So we all met with them.
Let's see here. Let's just see if there's any, anybody in the public want to speak on this? Okay, so then I guess we need to have the applicant come forward. Oh, wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. We need to have the applicant come forward, give their presentation real quick or. Jonathan, you want to, and then we'll.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jonathan Hules, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, 32801. I'm also in attendance with me is Eric Halverson with the developer, 111 Residential, and the project engineer, Lou Clayson with APN Engineering. Just a brief presentation to go through with you today. And, and really, our presentation's more going to focus, right now, we're at the beginning stages of a rather long entitlement process. And it's going to be a, a process in which this project, if, if transmitted today, will, will return to the City Council multiple times. But having said that, and this is the beginning, and we're talking about a map change, we want to present to you what the end game is, and that is a 250-unit residential apartment project. This is just a, a snapshot of the future land use map, more from the 10,000-foot view, just to show where the project is located. As mentioned before, the majority of it already having commercial entitlements. I think that's an important distinction here, that while the project today and the property is not developed, it isn't, in fact, entitled. So we're not talking about some raw, unentitled land that we're proposing to put on some use for the first time. It does have, as was mentioned, a commercial designation on the southern three-quarters with the northern third being agricultural, kind of a placeholder, legacy, future land use for this area. It is located west of Plymouth-Sorrento and does straddle on the 429 highway. The carve-out is the post office on Plymouth-Sorrento and located farther south is the Sunoco gas station in Apopka Mower. Here's another site shot of it, showing its layout, its rectangular in shape. And this is the conceptual plan. This is the end game. What we're talking about is a, a net density of 19 dwelling units an acre. We have to seek the, the 25-unit designation in the comp plan in order to achieve this because there's nothing above 15, except for 25. But the, in, 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 and for this project, we would be keeping it at 19 dwelling units, 250 units, and it would be proposed to be built in two buildings that would be centrally located in the, in the property as shown here. What that allows for is to achieve greater setbacks to all surrounding boundaries, but more, most importantly, to the east where there, there is the existing Plymouth Landings community. Also, in this layout, it would have the active amenity areas located within the central courtyard in which the two buildings would surround. And just for terms of scale, that central courtyard is approximately about a football field in size. You can also see on the outside of, of the, oh, that's the wrong. Out here would be garages. These would not be occupiable spaces, but simply garages. And we think also would act as somewhat of a, of a visual buffering. I talked about clustering of these buildings. What that does allow, and we have another slide to show this, is that it allows us to cite these buildings more than 130 feet from the existing Plymouth-Sorrento right-of-way. That would include, and I'll talk about in a moment, a 30-foot right-of-way donation that'd be made to the city for the future expansion of that road. This is another drawing of the conceptual site plan, not in color, but I think it highlights where that 30-foot right-of-way donation would occur, which is here. And that's shown with the aerial imagery over it. And then this image, I think, illustrates better some of the access improvements that are being proposed. And, and one of the most important things from this project is the proposal and the, and, and the condition we would, would put ourselves under to have two access points onto this property. The one access point dictated by Orange County is located here, would be a full access point on the Plymouth-Sorrento Road. But through the efforts and really the, the direction given by staff when we first came and met with Pam and Jim was, you need to explore having alternative means of accessing this site. And through that, and through Pam's good work of connecting us with the right individuals at CFX and at FDOT, we have, had discussions with both agencies, which would have some jurisdictional control over this access point. But we have given enough direction to feel comfortable that we will be able to deliver a direct access onto the signalized intersection of Orange Avenue. That's not without a great deal of cost and effort that it will take to, that's already been put forth, but also that it will take in order to achieve that. But that is not a requirement of your code for this project, but it's something that we would obligate ourselves to bring and we think is really something that is important to not only the functionality of this project, but also a great benefit to the existing road network in that we believe a lot of the, the community that would be living here will be utilizing that access point. And therefore relieving some, some of the traffic and volume issues that is already being experienced at Plymouth-Sorrento Road and 441. This is a conceptual elevation, just showing the setback of those buildings. They would be four-story in height, as illustrated here. That is, you know, part of that clustering idea we have is to get it into the central part of the, of the property and therefore being able to increase the minimum setback code required by, by approximately four times. These are conceptual elevations of the clubhouse. These are actually conceptual, but they're in, in real, in actual, another, came from another project that the developer is just completed construction of in Davenport over in Polk County. Here's two other photos from that project, not exactly the same, but a similar type of layout where you have a central courtyard. Shown on the right is the pool that would be, that is found in that project and also a typical unit for that project, showing the, the quality of finish and build. Here is a line of sight cross-section that I think really helps illustrate that, that extended setback that is being proposed as part of this project. And, and, and just down here, it shows front face of buildings to existing Plymouth-Sorrento Road of 130 feet, that would be 100 plus 30. Then we would include this 30-foot right-of-way donation within that distance, but even when the time comes, Plymouth-Sorrento is, is going to be four-laned, you would still have 100-foot setback from that right-of-way. In the interim period, we would be maintaining as many as the existing live oaks within that area to further enhance the buffering of, of this, of this project. In total, when you add it all up with the existing right-of-way and the rear yards of the nearest homes in Plymouth's, Plymouth's Landing, sorry, you, you wind up with about a, a setback from, from building to, to home of, of residence to residence of about over 240 feet. This is just the, looking the other direction, just to show the, the building's layout with respect to the 429 highway. Crown of the road actually is elevated in this area, so it's already 25 feet above the grade of this property. And then when you put it in totality, this just kind of shows the total layout. In terms of a line of sight from one of the residences on, on the four-story looking east, you have Plymouth-Sorrento Road here. You have one of these garage buildings that I had shown you in the conceptual site plan. And then you have Plymouth Landings further back. One important point to this line of sight is it does not take into account the oak trees that would be preserved within that donated 30-foot of right-of-way. And so it, it may even be a more buffered line of sight than what's shown here, and it likely will be. I mentioned what we thought was a real deal changer by providing that second access point through the coordination with CFX and FDOT to get out on to, directly onto the Orange Avenue intersection. Another important point that I think needs to be made, because like, what I mentioned earlier was that this, we're not dealing with an unentitled raw land here. We're talking about a, a property that is saddled up against 429, currently entitled the majority of it for commercial entitlements. That total yield actually, if you just did the math based on the, the maximum FAR and the acreage, would, would yield 130,000 square feet of commercial retail uses. But we wanted to compare what a reasonable commercial development would be versus what, what's being proposed here today in terms of traffic generation. And we used the ITA Trip Generation Handbook, 11th Generation, that's the most recent one, that's the controlling document. And when you compare a 100,000-square-foot retail commercial project versus what the 250-unit apartments that are being proposed for this project, what you see is a huge reduction in trip generation, traffic generated between the two, both on the daily, so the 24-hour period, and in AM, but most importantly too, in the PM peak hour period. 24-hour period, and in AM, but most importantly, too, in the PM peak hour period. And what this table shows, and it's showed here, net change in trips in parentheses, both at the daily rates and the PM peak hour rates, is that it's approximately about an 88% reduction in traffic generation. And that is empirical data, that is data that is, that is the criteria that's utilized by traffic engineers when they evaluate trip generation. And so in comparing the two, you have a vast reduction in potential traffic from the two uses. We think that's important, because what we've heard both at the community meeting, and what we heard at the planning commission from folks that were in attendance was, traffic, we're concerned about traffic, we already have perceived traffic issues or maybe actual traffic issues. And in my mind, you know, an 88% reduction is really a huge one if we're turning about future development of this site. In comparison, just to compare the two. As I was wrong on my math, I had, I guess I didn't do it right in my head, but existing commercial entitlements today, you can, would yield up to 142,000 square feet of retail. Whether that could actually be realized, I don't know, but certainly a pretty intensive commercial development could be built there. If that was the case, that would go through a very short circuit of review in order to be built. All that would be required would be a major development plan, and whether that even would come before you would be dependent on whether it was a phased project or it all came at once. Discretion, of course, is much less for the staff and city council in dealing with a major development plan than what this process that we are putting ourselves forth with respect to the apartments. Existing commercial, they would not be required by your code to seek that second access point at the Orange Avenue 441 intersection. They would have to work with Orange County, present, you know, probably with a single-access point, or a single-access point with an emergency access point off of Plymouth Sorento Road. Just talking about code minimums for commercial development, they're much less than what we're proposing with respect to where the buildings would be located. And in terms of what Jean had mentioned earlier, this site would meet the criteria for Live Local Act. So if there is the potential that not only could this project property be developed with multifamily uses, that development approval process would be administrative only, that project would never come before the city council, and that project is only required to meet the city's minimum performance standards, i.e. setbacks, parking, access. And that, to me, that's a much different, and I think that would be an unfortunate endpoint for the community from what is being proposed here today, which is a project that really is trying to buffer itself from its surrounding use, the existing surrounding community, and also provide that second access point at Orange Avenue and 441, the lighted intersection, which we think is going to be the preferred method to exit the site in order to get onto the 429, in order to get onto 441. As I mentioned before, also, this developer would obligate itself to donate that 30 feet of right-of-way for the future widening of Plymouth Sorento when that does occur. And so it's, while it's not going to be, you know, other work will be needed in order for that road widening to happen, at least this furthers those goals. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions now. I would just ask an opportunity to address any comments that may be made during the public comment section.
Okay. Any questions for Jonathan?
There's a couple of quick ones. We obviously met last week, I think. What, I guess, how do we ensure, how do we lock in the 19 per acre versus you guys doing kind of a bait-and-switch on us, and not saying you would, but developers are developers? So, and just maxing out and getting 300-plus units there? And then, in that same question, guaranteeing that you guys will provide that second access point?
Sure. That's a great question. What, and you led me to a slide I forgot to share with you, and this is the process, right? So this, where I, the comparison between a commercial project or a project that could be built under Live Local, it may have, the commercial project may have one stop here at city council on a major development plan approval, or it may be at staff level, depending on the size of the first project that comes in and how that's phased and developed. Live Local project would never come before the city council. This is the, this is the procedure for this project we're talking about today, and what it deals with is multiple visits with you all to check in on it. But what I would say, and I think staff has a different opinion on this, but to lock in not only the density, not only what we're proposing in terms of building locations, but also that access point would be the use of PD zoning when we would, if this project were to be transmitted here today and it returns back. And so where we are in terms of processes, we're right here at the transmittal hearings. This isn't a final approval of anything. What happens next, it goes to the state DEO for review, and once that's completed, it returns back to the city with those comments, and then we would have, to have our planning commission public hearing on our rezoning. And at that point, that's where I would say a PD rezoning would lock all those things in. And that's because a PD zoning requires a master development plan, or whatever the term may be, but also a PD agreement, in which all of those terms could be locked in. And that way, we have the density at 19 dwelling units an acre, you have the donation of the 30 feet of right-of-way, you have the second access point, and then you lock in also the development plan. We, you know, based on direction by staff, we would be processing this with a straight zoning at apartment, yeah, at apartment zoning. And while we would still put on the record all of these things, it's harder to lock in those pledges.
Okay. And Steph, I'm sure you have a comment, do you want to comment now? Just, because I know we briefly touched on that. Are you guys open to that? Is that...
When we bring this before planning commission and city council at the major development plan portion, that's when the number of units would be obviously out there. So that's the time we lock it in, is with the major development plan itself.
Okay. And then also with the, I guess, that second access point, too, that's a big one.
Correct. That's all part of it, that would all be part of the major development plan. That all gets ironed out. And then at that point, then, once the major development plan is approved by you all, then it goes to construction plan approval.
And that would be under a straight zoning process? If the PD process is utilized, you lock it in at your zoning change.
Okay. Okay. And then the other one that we discussed at our meeting was kind of an enhanced landscape buffer. I know that wasn't one that was liked a lot, but just having that clumping bamboo up front, just to, I think it's 11 homes that it backs up to on the east side of PSR, just to give that extra layer of protection. I'd really like to see that. I don't know if anybody else has that same concern of, within your buffer, your landscape buffer, doing some type of...
Yeah, and what I would tell you, Commissioner, or ask of you, Commissioner, is when we come back, if we're transmitted today to continue this process and continue the dialogue towards a more final approval, is, we heard you loud and clear, it's the next stages in which we would, we would bring that detail. I don't know of whether it'll be clumping bamboo. We would need to look at the tree survey and just see how many of those large oak trees...
Yeah, it seemed ambiguous when we were speaking then, which is fine.
Right. And we haven't, you know, that's where the details need to come, and they will come, but we're not there yet because we're at the map stage of the process.
Understood.
Thank you. Duly noted, and we will address that.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
I'll wait until after her public comment.
Okay. Last case, any questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I'll wait till after her public comment.
Oh, okay. You know what, I'm going to wait till after public comment, because then I'll hear the concerns.
Yeah. Understand, thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Sean. Okay. Who'd like to speak on this matter?
I'm a bikini, 3603 Golden Gem Road. Just an observation, legal counsel for the applicant measured, mentioned just now about dialogue, and dialogue is something that's very important. And at the last meeting, where this is voted 6 to 1 against, there were 20 other people here to represent opinion to the commission. Tonight, or this afternoon, I see one person. Why is it that there were 20 people here last time, and there's only one person here today? Was there any obligation to notify people that this was here today? Because we only learned about it on Sunday evening, when we picked up the agenda. So 20 people turned up and spoke about it at the DRC meeting. There's only one person here today. That concerns me, because dialogue needs to be fair and equitable. It's not fair and equitable if the residents didn't know what's coming here today, and they didn't get the opportunity to talk. Now, the applicant mentioned that there would be opportunity to four lanes on Plymouth Sorento Road. Well, they prepared to donate 30 foot to allow that to happen, but they're on the wrong part of the road. In order to get four lanes down to the traffic lights, there's already a garage there, there's other pieces of property which would have to either be purchased or obtained by eminent domain. So it's not a given that there's going to be four lanes there. Other than that, it was just observations. Thank you.
Kelly Butcher, 761 Plymouth Sorento Road. At the meeting on the 9th, we had a good turnout, people who were totally objected to this project for one reason or another, because of bus stops, getting in and out of the complex at Plymouth Landing. Now, I'm the little house on the corner, okay? I'm not in a subdivision, I'm in a little house. They mentioned that they're going to donate 30 foot of right-of-way. Well, guess what? They don't have a choice, because there's not 15 feet on my side. If you go 15 feet on my side to get their 35, their 30-foot setback, you're in my living room. So that is an issue. The other thing is, too, is the elevation of their complex is going to sit higher than me. I'm already sitting low already, where I get a lot of water runoff from the road and everything like that. So they're going to sit higher, and then I'm lower, that's going to make more water to my property and cause potential flooding to my property and Plymouth Landing as well. I'm also concerned regarding the traffic issue. Now, he stated that he worked with staff and this and the other for the secondary entrance, but he came to me and I, he talked to me about that first, and I told him that I was not happy with dump trucks and everything like that going in front of my house. I have special needs children, okay? The noise from that alone is going to disrupt my home in a very bad way. And there's no guarantee that they're going to get access from the traffic light. Now, PSR is currently under review by Orange County, which I initiated a traffic study from Orange County. The traffic count on that road has not been updated since 2007, I believe it was. There's over 7,000 cars that pass my house on a daily basis. There's not going to be a reduction of traffic, there will be an increase in traffic, I don't care what anybody says. When the 429 came, they said, "Oh, you're going to see less traffic." Guess what? When somebody's mouth's moving, it's lying, because that was not the case. We have accidents on a daily basis. The accident rate is so bad there that I started passing out blue forms and witnessing them, because nobody wanted to wait 12 hours for FHP. Now, these vehicles are landing in my yard. Two weeks ago, we had an accident that was in front of my house that could have caused me my life or my child's life, because a car went out of control because of the way the road is. And this happens a lot. Now, I'm fearful for my family, and my safety, my children, and my home, that have been there for 13 years. And I'm looking to you guys to help. They were shot down before, and they shouldn't be allowed to proceed. This is too much. Two buildings, four stories high, overlooking a little teeny-tiny house that barely has a six-foot ceiling, you know? It doesn't even fit in, okay? Even with you adding the Floridian or whatever, which y'all snuck in on me, because I would have been here talking about that, but that's another story. You know, enough's enough. We're overgrown over there already, we're on top of each other, okay? It's so, it's so packed and compact over there that you can literally get pregnant by your neighbor without leaving your house.
Anybody else want to speak?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. I've watched this play on numbers before, and God bless the developer for thinking on his toes. They came up and they compared to if it was a commercial property, how much traffic it would create as comparison to building this development there. The thing that they're not taking into account is the traffic on Plymouth Sorento Road right now at that intersection. I don't know if any of you guys have been out there during rush hour traffic. Sometimes it backs up way beyond the interchange road that takes you over to the 429. The wrecks, there used to be a joke in Plymouth, that was if you want to see a wreck, go sit at the post office for 20 minutes, and you'll see one right there at the post office. Between the post office entrance and the 429 and 441, there's more wrecks than you can shake a stick at on a daily basis. The traffic backs up, the people wanting to go into the store with trucks stop on the side of the road and create traffic issues, and we're going to add to it by allowing them to put this. So it's not like it's saving us traffic by allowing them to build residential. It's adding to the traffic situation on Plymouth Sorento Road and adding to the lack of safety that's going on there. Once again, we as a city, I know it's a county road, but somebody's got to talk to the county and the state. We're putting the cart before the horse. There's no planning in place before we're approving stuff like this. We're adding to the overall load. It's a problem if you look back at what we're doing. This city is doing it religiously. There's no future planning. Where's the infrastructure planning that will accommodate stuff like this? What about the people that already live there? We're going to increase their safety hazards and the burden on them. So it got turned down by the planning board 6 to 1. I think it should be turned down by the commission here today 3 to 1.
Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Jonathan, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep my comments brief, but the sentiments that you just heard were similar to what was expressed at planning commission, but really, I think they all lead to almost support the project, because you heard traffic and you heard that, the issue being is, where I disagree is, this property is zoned commercial. And while it may not be developed today, it is going to be developed in the future, whether that, and that process, and that future timeline has probably been condensed by all of the development that's going on at Florida Town Center and the Live Local Act. And if it's developed under its current entitlements, this board has very little discretion to have any say on how that looks like, because all they have to do is come in and meet minimum requirements of the city's code. And so what I'm saying is, this alternative, I think, is actually a win, because it includes that second access point. And I can't emphasize it enough to you how I think that really changes the functionality of this project, and relieves what any other use of this property is going to do, which is contribute a lot more traffic to this... which is contribute a lot more traffic to this Plymouth Sorento Road, which is going to be widened in some point in the future, but it's not widened today. And so with this secondary, this access point, I'm not going to call it a secondary access point, this direct access point to a signalized access at Orange Avenue really, I think, is going to be the game changer here. And I think that's kind of being not recognized. And I understand that, you know, anytime there's a change with a property that's looked the same way it has for a long time, you get that resistance. But here, I just can't emphasize enough to you, this is not a property that doesn't have entitlements today. It's not a property that's not going to be... I get calls all the time about this new Live Local Act, about properties just like this. 111 Residential just so happened to have this. I located this property, reached a contractual arrangement with, went under contract with the current owners well before anyone even knew Live Local was going to be a law. It was never discussed prior to this legislative session and it's a real change. So what we're asking today is the opportunity to keep moving forward, to finalize this plan, to finalize our commitments to this project, to you all and to the community by moving forward in the next phases of the development approval process. This is not a final approval. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right, we'll close public hearing.
Okay.
Venus Griffith, Clear Lake State Subdivision. And I just came in on what the development is trying to build on Plymouth Sorento Road. I travel there quite often. And we have a very small post office there. And I can see it's going to be a flood zone. And that is a real problem. The cars race down the street. It's because, I'm a careful driver since I've been from New York, but I mean, it was a Jeep that passed three cars because we were going too slow. We were going to speed limit. So, I mean, we need to have infrastructure there first. We need a bigger post office there first. I go down there to really go and see my daughter who lives in Sorento. And I think it's unfair to people in that part of Apopka to have them more crowded. Like Binyam Road, the one thing I fear is getting out. It is disaster. And we can't get out fast enough on Plymouth Sorento. I just see helicopters coming in there because you don't have any street for the police officers that come down on there. So we need better infrastructure over there because, like this young lady said, it does flood, bad flooding over there when we have a lot of rain.
All right. What's the will of the council? I guess you had some questions.
Just a couple of questions. So did that end? I mean, some of what you have in the concept right there on the screen, the stormwater retention pond up near where the post office is at currently, that would be engineered and constructed per the requirements of our code to ensure that water is collected from that site? And then the affirmative on that one?
Yep, correct.
That's my assumption. But then from a roadway perspective, the area that's in white, all of that's going to be improved?
Correct.
That's improved roadway?
That would be an approved roadway along all of the frontage, most of the frontage of this project. And your code does require intersection, those turn lane improvements. So it functionally will turn from a two-lane narrow segment to a wider roadway, oftentimes three if you include the turn lanes.
Got it. Do we know what the level of services today on that road? C. And typically, what's the level of service that organizations will get to before they start doing capacity improvements?
I'm looking at Orange County's data. In their contingency. It's the current level of service on the road is C. The adopted level of service is E. And according to Orange County from 2023, the available daily capacity is 1,094 trips. So according to Orange County, there's lots of capacity on the road by the way that we take traffic counts and the way we compare that to our levels of service. So they say there's plenty of capacity on the road. You can't look at capacity at two times of a day and say, "It's bad at this time, so the road's bad." It don't work that way.
And then I think Commissioner Nesta brought up the point before is, you know, I'd rather have documentation that protects the interest of what's being described here. Obviously, I can only get behind this remotely if that signalization and that access point occurs. Because again, if you're looking at your AM traffic counts, I would assume most people are either going to want to travel on 441 further down to connect to 451 or make two or three right-hand turns to get on the 429 South. Or even that regard, if they're going north, still go that same direction. I'm just trying to think of the path of least resistance. That's how I would go. And having an agreement in place ensures the max dwelling units. Because as you may be aware, I was a dissenting vote when we went through the 25 density classifications in different geographies because my assumption was developers would come and maximize and try and do as much as they could on the land versus us seeing and then memorializing what that max dwelling units would be, in this case, 19. I would want to have insurances there. And again, to some of the public comment, obviously, I wouldn't stand up here and represent that. It's a net traffic reduction. That's not what you're implying. It's basically saying that if it were being built to the maximum standards that would be allowable on the commercial property, it would be a net reduction in terms of what that would look like versus this residential property.
Correct.
And I hate to do this to you guys, but I just feel like I need to because there's been some accusations made. Have you ever paid me a cash payment, a check payment, wire transfer, ACH, any sort of compensation for communication on this particular project?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just want to put that on the public record. Yourself and then any parties that are with you.
I can only speak for myself and I have...
I just want to make sure that I'm doing things on the up and up.
Yes.
Now, in terms of the buffer, yeah, I think to Commissioner's point, and I'm no landscape architect, but I think the intent is to make sure that what the property looks like today versus if it were improved, the residents over there almost couldn't tell, right? You're trying to create as opaque a buffer as possible so that people don't kind of, to the public comment point, feel like you can peer into other properties that may appear to the east side of that roadway.
Well, not only buffer, but setback distance. And I think those two here can be maximized to a great deal to achieve that goal. And that's through using as much of the existing canopy of oaks that are there and also getting those buildings located central of the site and you have setbacks that are four, four times, five times larger than what the code would require.
Yeah, the number you provided to me was 244...
Yes, and that...
...foot buffer from the line of where the building was at all the way going to the backyard of the line of the setback by the Plymouth Landing.
Yes, yes, Commissioner. Our math has it at about over 240 feet from this layout shown on the screen here. If you were to draw a straight line across, from here to here is over 240 feet. Now, obviously, some of that distance is not on this property. Some of that distance would be that 30-foot of right-of-way donation.
The entrance to your development there is literally, is it kind of shummy? Because I mean, I also have gotten some emails and just for the record to say that when we meet with our developers and engineers, which is common, the one thing I say is that it's not a sunshine violation and we don't discuss our vote at all. We just give you the time and lend you the opportunity to kind of advocate for your development. And it allows us to ask for a lot of questions that would save time at this forum. But what I wanted to know is where is the entrance of your... Because I know that street. And I think I've been expressed to you and I expressed it to Mr. James Hitt. What makes that particular corner very awkward is that little street. Is it Highland? Is that the name of that street? Highland. That's what makes that whole corner kind of awkward. And but the entrance to the development is not anywhere...
It's north of...
What's the testing?
So Highland is...
It's well north.
Yeah, Highland's down here. I don't know if you could see that marker. I didn't even capture it on this image. Our access is here. And that access is not dictated by us. It's not dictated by the city. It's dictated by the county because currently Plymouth Sorento is a county road. So we have to coordinate the access onto it with them. And this is the access and the only access that they would permit.
Yeah. I mean, when I travel there, and one of the things I did express was I would prefer residential over commercial at that corner there because you already have the gas station. And I know the property that you're talking about. And with the access that you will be getting toward the light on Orange Avenue is definitely going to alleviate some of the concerns with adding that traffic onto Plymouth Sorento. I feel that if you are living in this complex, there would be probably, unless you had to go to the 429, would be the only time would be making a left. Would be making a left onto, to go toward the 429.
Well, I would even say, Commissioner, that if you were going to go onto the 429, and I need to include a better aerial.
Right.
I would think you would still come out here. You would make a right. You would go up to the connector. And you'd come over onto the connector and get on up here. You would not make this because a right and a right and a right is far easier than making a left and a left.
And another left.
Yeah, true. It really all, and I'm going to echo what both Commissioner Nesta and Becker said. At this point, what's really going to kind of for us to be on board with it is if, when you come back with this... Because right now, it's just going up to the state, Tallahassee at this point, right?
Just a transmittal.
Just a transmittal. But that's going to make or break, you know, this development, is having access to that.
And we understand that. And we recognize that very early through meetings with city staff. I mean, I think we in the development community know before we ever get to a podium here, we've been working for six months with staff. And this is the second or third iteration of what this access looks like because it's not only a two-party dance, it's a three-party dance when we're dealing with FDOT. But we feel through the meetings that we've had, and once again, thank Pam for helping to facilitate those, we feel very good about being able to deliver this access point.
And the engineer has already addressed any flooding for this area?
Yeah, and I mean, I can bring up our engineer. I can tell you that this project will have to be designed not only to the standard water management district requirements, but because it's in the Lake Apopka Hydrologic Basin, it will have to meet even more heightened requirements in terms of stormwater storage and therefore this pond gets bigger. And that's just reflected here. This would be a dry pond.
So the other concern that I did hear were accidents. And we don't have any numbers on that, do we? Chief McKenley, do we have any numbers on that? So we don't have those numbers.
I understand.
Anything else, Commissioner Blockes?
No.
Yeah.
I mean, just to put it all on my comments because I wasn't done yet. But it's okay.
You're kidding.
It's okay.
I know, that's it. I thought if he took a breath, I said, "Okay, I'm jumping in."
No, I just wanted to address a couple of things that were said in public comment too. You know, obviously, the planning commission, you know, not to have any disrespect to the planning commission. I mean, I respect their opinions. But I don't know how they formulated their, you know... I know that during some of the comments during public comment for Planning Commission, there was this idea of no development whatsoever. We don't want anything to go there. And I don't know how much of that weighed into Planning Commission votes, but that's just simply not... I mean, the land is entitled. There's only so much that we can prevent from going there. As to why people aren't here tonight, I have no idea.
At the PNC, you do tell them that it is scheduled for the city council.
Yes, yeah, we go through the schedule and it's posted and notified with the original notifications that were sent out. The notices that were mailed out, the notices that were posted provided both dates.
Okay, no, we've closed public comment.
But even with that being the case, with lack of attendance here this evening, again, procedurally, and you had it on under one slide, the one that we're on right now is the density discussion. So that's a first reading. My assumption is that doesn't come back. That's going to be a joint re-second hearing after a transmittal. So let's advertise it right now and then every day forward that this is going to come back for second reading if this is approved tonight. So that's...
We can repost the land also with the public notification.
Yeah, and each of the... So the next step, the planning commission on the rezoning and then the city council hearings on a rezoning and the adoption phase would be noticed.
But I would prefer the PD to have comfort that what we're discussing here is memorialized and stuck to. I mean, that's a conversation that we can have later on. And I just wanted to just one more comment, not on this project, but it was mentioned during public comment. There's no way we snuck in Floridian Town Center to anybody. There's, we did so much annexation, cobbling together of land, land use amendments, zoning changes, major development plans. For that to say that that was snuck in on anybody. So that's a little bit unfair of a statement. But as it relates to this, I don't have any other comments.
Just one last small one for me, just so everyone kind of understands what my head's at. I actually do somewhat agree with Planning Commission in that I don't think this directly is similar to the surrounding areas. But at the same time, my biggest concern is Senate Bill 102 in that we can kind of massage this now or if we deny this July 1st, you guys can reapply, basically, if it's affordable. Some approvals need to be done statewide or through the state and we don't have any say in it then. So that's where I'd rather work through this, negotiate through it and make it work best for everybody on that front.
I have that correct date if you're interested.
Sure, give us the number.
We have 439 bicycle crashes, 12 fatalities, 453 motorcycle crashes, 31 of them being protect fatalities. We also have 12 in Orange County.
We'll have to get the data.
We'll get the data to you. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, we're done, we're done, we're done. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Okay, bring it back to the council, looking for a motion to approve...
It's 3006.
07.
No, that's 6.
Excuse me.
Because that's the one that's going up to...
Yeah, 3,006.
6.
Yes. No, no, no.
It's 3,006.
3,006, yes, okay. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,007.
Ordinance number 3,007. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from agriculture and commercial to HDR 25 for a portion of certain real property generally located east of State Road 429, west of Plymouth Sorento Road and north of US 441, owned by Gary D. Charlton Living Trust, Peggy G. Charlton Living Trust, half interest, and Gary D. Charlton Living Trust, half interest, comprising 13.05 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jean Sanchez of the Community Development Department. This is the companion request to the previous item in reference to the future land use map amendment. The recommendation or request is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3007 and hold it open... and hold it over for second reading and adoption, amending the future land use designation for 750 and 922 Plymouth Sorento Road from agriculture and commercial to HDR 25. As previously mentioned, the proposed designation of HDR 25 is compatible with the area due to parcels on the north as being within the delineated area eligible to have the designation of HDR 25. Subject properties are within the area that includes the Floridian Town Center in the northwest and the approved high density residential development on the northeast within unincorporated Orange County. Of course, this request is contingent on the adoption of the previous ordinance 3006 to amend the comprehensive plan to extend the geographical area to include these properties to be eligible for the said future land use. And as stated, the applicant intends to construct a multifamily development. Except for one DRC member, DRC recommends approval. The police chief did express concerns, as I said, in the previous item regarding land use compatibility. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3007 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
No, there's just one small clarification that we are doing 19 dwelling units, but it's 19.15 or it rounds up to 0.16. I just want to make sure that should this come back around, it's not like, oh, you guys are screwing us. It's to be more precise, it's 19.16. So I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes, correct.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Move down.
Traffic statistics are 26,000 traffic crashes, 203 of them were fatal. Okay? You, 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 and you, I will hold accountable and I will file a lawsuit against the city if anything happens to my family or my property as a result of this development coming in and increasing the traffic. You are making a poor decision to allow this to pass and to continue. Not to mention that one of those residents is a residential. There is a house there, a house that was built in 1925 that should be in the historical society because it's one of three houses for Apopka that is should be in the historical. It's one of the three third oldest houses for Apopka. Did anybody mention that? No, they didn't. Okay, now, I live here, I'm a citizen. Now, that's too much development for that little tiny area. Go out there, come spend a week in my house and see what I see. I'll put you up, I'll feed you. Look at what I see every day. The trucks that come up and down that road, the jake breaking, the accidents, the coming out of your house to see a car flying over your damn head. And you can't stop it because nobody wants to do anything about that road. That's on you, 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 and you. The blood of my family will be on you, just like the blood of Austin Duran is on you. Speak up and do better. You represent Apopka, you represent us. We're talking, and maybe only my voice, and I don't care if you like me or not, but you have a job to do. You have a responsibility to the people here, not a developer who's greasing somebody's Nelson?
You don't call out. Point of order. Okay, you're you're done. Sit down, please, ma'am.
I got two minutes.
No, you don't. You're done. The moment that you start accusing of of being on the take and hence why I asked the question before, I think it's time.
Like anybody's going to admit to it.
Really?
I'm glad I I'm glad we we. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3007 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker. Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Jim, if you can just get me, or I guess Chief McKinley, a documentation of the accidents and.
We'll get that directly.
Okay?
F H P.
All right. Over a course of what period of time? Because that that seemed rather inflated.
Chief, we could probably look at that for like the previous year.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance number 3008.
Ordinance number 3008. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from commercial to industrial for certain real property generally located southwest on the southwest corner of US 441 and Lakeview Drive. Owned by Mid Florida Freezer Properties LLC, comprising 4.88 acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department, this is a request to accept the first reading ordinance number 3008 and hold it over for second reading and adoption, amending future land use map for Mid Florida Freezer Properties from commercial to industrial. The subject properties are located on the southwest corner of US 441 and Lakeview Drive, approximately 4.88 acres in size. The proposed future land use designation of industrial is compatible with the area due to parcels on the south and west of the subject properties having a future land use designation of the same. It is also this application is also being processed simultaneously with an application to rezone the property from corridor commercial, C C O R, to IL Light Industrial Zoning District. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on May 9, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the future land use amendment. Recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3008 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on June 21, 2023 or soon thereafter. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3008 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3009.
Ordinance number 3009. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from C Core Commercial Corridor to IL Light Industrial for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of US 441 and Lakeview Drive. Owned by Mid Florida Freezer Properties LLC, comprising 4.88 acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department, this is the companion rezoning application to the previous future land use amendment item. It is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3009 and hold it over for second reading and adoption, changing the zoning from C C O R Corridor Commercial to IL Light Industrial for Mid Florida Freezer Properties. The northern portion of the subject properties are currently housed in industrial warehouse and retail uses adjacent to US 441 and Lakeview Drive. The IL Light Industrial Zoning District is compatible with the proposed future land use designation of industrial, and properties on the west and south have the same zoning designations of IL. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on May 9, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed change of zoning. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3009 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on June 21, 2023 or soon thereafter. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number.
3009.
3009.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, city council reports. Commissioner Velasquez.
Well, I want to kind of go back to the RFP. And basically, I know that you have something. No, that's you. So I'm going to yield to Commissioner Becker.
This this isn't intended to be an L B O. It's more of a get the general sense of what the spirit of this RFP was. I think the last RFP, and let's just assume good intent for the sake of an argument, but it was more to kind of validate findings that were in certain reports versus just, you know, we're past that phase, let's just accept them and let's like track them to completion. So I'll just read what's on my page. Again, Chief Wyman, Chief Knapp, Chief Maynard have started some of this process, but.
And and I just want to, for the record, is that Mr. Duran has written to each and every one of us individually, and that's why this is coming up again. And I did tell you that at the agenda review, that I was responding to Mr. Duran's, you know, request and that it was important to him, and that's why we're bringing this up again.
Yeah, so this is a request for proposal guideline and scope titled Project Manager Apopka Fire Department justification statement. In 2022, the Apopka Fire Department, our city, friends, and most importantly, family, lost firefighter Austin Duran due to a workplace accident while honorably serving in the line of duty. As a result, a series of reports have been completed, the State Fire Marshal's report and the Gannon Emergency Services Report, or are in the process of completion, which is the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, the NIOSH report. These reports outline amongst other things deficiencies or areas for improvement in the operations of the Apopka Fire Department. Over the last year, a series of events, and this is just factually speaking, it's not to bring up wounds again, but over the last year, a series of events and votes have taken place that indicate a lack of confidence by various parties in how the administration will accept findings in the mentioned reports and fully track the implementation of solutions to address and close these findings. Like I said, some of this has already started. As was suggested in the Gannon Report and approved in a majority consensus of the city council, there is desire for a change manager, or in the case of this proposal, a more common term in the industry would be project manager, who will be directly accountable to the city council as it relates to the oversight of the implementation of these changes. Having an independent product project manager will ensure all necessary changes required in the reports of findings are adequately cited, addressed, and implemented. This will allow AFD administration full focus on creating and executing the changes required to promote a safe, healthy, and motivated department. The high level scope of work would be the primary outcome of this work will be consolidated recommendations from the three safety reports, one of which is still outstanding, and we don't know the volume that that might present. Creating execution plans, schedules, and tracking the implementation of the recommendations. In addition to the report recommendations, the project manager will also facilitate the creation of a strategic plan for the department, target organizational structure, the target organizational structure, and then succession planning as was outlined within the report, while at all phases of the work accountable to the city council. The roles and responsibilities, as I've got enumerated there, would be to create formal master tracking of all safety report recommendations. Second bullet's very important, and we discussed this in our pre-meeting as well. Create a prioritization scale to ensure the most critical items are addressed in proper order. Facilitate cross-functional sessions to ensure all necessary departments and personnel are consulted when creating standard operating guidelines, SOGs as referred to, to address any findings. Create project plans with clear timelines of when tasks are started and expected to be completed. Create budget justifications for items requiring additional capital or operating expense. Lead the creation and completion of an AFD strategic plan. As part of this strategic plan, create target operating model and succession plan. Create an SOG governance policy and process. Benchmark against local, state, and federal fire rescue best practices and standards, and create recurring reporting to the city council citing progress and timeline targets as well as any barriers to success. The duration of this would be, I would think, the initial contract period would be a year, where I have in parentheses, or otherwise bid, or otherwise bid based off of the scope of work that we put out. And then, of course, have provisions in there for potential additional contract periods, which would be negotiable. And really, from an accountability standpoint, the project manager will have sole accountability to the city council in terms of oversight, serve as an escalation path, and removal of any barriers to the success to this statement of work that we get bids on. And and it's to start here because I think it creates an environment where people can start to have 100% confidence that there is a true neutral party that is overseeing this. And then stage two, really, I don't see this being value to a specific department. Project managers are used in all lines of work across all industries, technology, manufacturing, you name it. Because the one thing is that a project manager, through their their book of knowledge, they have their own kind of certification processes and things like that. But their most important gift is that they make sure that cross functionally across layers, hierarchies, that people are completely aware of what's going on, and that's complete transparency. And they have the skill set to, again, know how to prioritize, know that if there's conflict within the teams, how to satisfy that conflict. And so I think that's a value add, not just for this scope of work, but a but a center of excellence that we should contemplate having for the City of Apopka anyways. Because I know that we've there was some, you know, just like software implementations that are used across the organization. I'm talking to you, Rob, in the back of the room, too. You know, some people like the asset management tool. Some departments may have a better understanding than others, and, you know, how do you do all that stuff? But from the the Fire Department, I think this is more reflective of what the true spirit of what we wanted in the RFP to begin with, but I can be welcome to hear what the other people say, and then work with staff to get this written and published.
Only I'd say, do you want to wait until we get back the the report from NIOSH?
No, no, because I I understand, I asked him about that report, and that could take up to two years, he said. Chief Wyman did say that it depends on them. I don't I don't feel at this point that we should wait for that report because we have one report already, and there's no guarantee that that report will come anytime soon.
Yeah, we have plenty to work on in the meantime as well, so. So, yeah, I think it would make sense to implement as soon as tomorrow. Get this back out.
Not quite that easy.
I know.
Sure, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's not just a lift and shift, and you publish this for the RFP. The general spirit of what we're trying to accomplish is.
And I and I did mention to Blanch, because we discussed that at my agenda review, and I really have to say thank you to the staff because I know we only get like an hour, and I always seem to keep them two and a half to three hours. So I appreciate all the time that you do give me. And I did say to Blanch, it would be a 30 day out, and from there, we'll work from there. Okay.
What do you mean, as opposed to?
45.
Oh, gotcha, okay, oh, I see, okay, understood. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So do we need do we need a formal vote for instruction, or is everybody?
Do we need a formal? I would like to have a formal vote.
If y'all like big motions, that's a big vote.
Right, that would be, yes.
Do you want to make a motion?
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we go out and solicit again any RFP for review, not for review, just to get someone to come in and overview the findings of the Gannon Report and either continue to give us recommendations or validate what they've already been doing. So I make the motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you to each one of you on the council, thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Velasquez? Would you want to yield your full time to me?
I owe him that, but you know, you took a breath, and then I said, okay, I can jump in. Basically, of course, I mean, we've had a busy few, two weeks, two and a half weeks, three weeks, and we each attended the graduations for our seniors, both at Apopka High School, Wakayva High School. We attended, we had a really, I had a really good time attending, and Commissioner Becker was in, Nesta, and Commissioner Smith. We went to the first annual basketball fundraiser game, which was a lot of fun, was held at the Apopka High School, and congratulations to the Apopka Police Department, they were the successors. But I understand that the fire is coming back next year. What else did we do? Oh, recently, we attended the annual Memorial Day service, which is always, for me, it's an honor because it, you know, we pay homage to our veterans from all the wars. Recently, this past weekend, which I really enjoyed, was attending the downtown mural paintout, and that's a lot of, I have to give credit to the the McLeod's for allowing to give them the canvas to do it, and of course, the passion for Louis and Pedro from the downtown barbers. They've done an excellent job, and if our residents get a chance, please go into the parking lot, or even just come down to Park Avenue and stand by City Hall and look at the mural that's being done, Apopka, how it's beautiful.
That's the drive across the city.
Yes, it is. And then yesterday, yesterday, we did the ribbon cutting over at 441.
You did?
I know, we're very busy. We showed up for that, and that was a lot of fun, and it was well attended, and if any. And if anybody who drives 441, you definitely do see the improvements that are there. Really looks good going from Central, Central Avenue up to, is that Bradford? Bradshaw, Bradshaw, where we have the new mediums that makes the traffic safer for all of us. And and it really looks beautiful, and we had a great, again, a great attendance by not just the city staff, so thank you to the city staff. Certainly have have made this happen for us here in the city of Apopka. And what else did I want to say? Just, I wanted to give an update, and that was for you, Commissioner Becker. I did ask, I did follow up on the Apopka Bay Ridge Cemetery. And I understand that a letter was sent out to the Bay Ridge owner to see if they would consider the annexation, and if they had some kind of records on who is buried there, and to make sure that they don't continue to provide burial plots. So that's where we're at with that. Let me see, oh, and Richard Earp, is he still around? Just wanted to say thank you to him, because he's constantly giving us an update on the Clearwater Estates. And I think that's it. I think that's it for me. So thank you.
Now, Bay Ridge, are we just going to pick up that conversation during budget time?
Well, after they get.
On the Bay, well, she brought up Bay Ridge, I just wanted to make sure, are we just going to carry on that conversation during budget? Or whenever, if you receive response?
All right.
Good evening, Randall Williams, Parks and Rec Director. I did send the letter, and we've been playing a little phone tag. But we're going to set a meeting here very soon to.
But at work, I mean, yeah, budget workshops, late July.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, I'll start my time, and it kills me, because I went over for a visitation with the family, but the funeral, we were precluded from attending it, but Ms. Kathy Hopper.
Oh, I forgot.
Yeah, she was 80 years young, integral member of the Apopka Women's Club.
For, oh, she's been a lifetime member there.
And the, she was an ambassador for the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
She was congregation, fellow members of our congregation at Apopka United Methodist Church. And she passed away on June 1st, and she was just, you know, just a quick anecdote. When we were first talking about the splash pad at Kithleyan, she had, she was sitting front row with that green shirt on. She was so concerned about, well, how are we going to secure the plants? If you get rid of those tennis courts, how are we going to secure the plants overnight when it's the Apopka Art and Foliage Festival? So you always knew that she was tenacious whenever.
Oh, she was, she was, she was, um, four foot, she would let you know what she wanted.
But she was four feet, but we went to the 11 o'clock service, and whenever it's passing the P, she would always come over the pew, beeline towards me, and we would just give each other a hug every Sunday. And, you know, with my height and her her height, it was, it was something to see. But I just want to make sure that the family knows that we're we're all thinking of them. In terms of, you mentioned at the Clear Lake update, you know, I've seen some of the emails going back and forth, and we talked a little bit in the pre-council meeting. Can we just, at some point, have a targeted conversation about what the alternative is? Because, you know, when we approve business, that meeting, we approved a certain course, and it sounds like that course is is deviated. So I would just want to make sure that we have whatever options are coming back on the table.
Yeah, I mean, what's, I mean, I just answered that pretty quickly. The the, what we thought was just a St. John's water management issue became a DEP issue. And so they have thrown cold water on a pretty, I thought, a pretty solid plan. So we've got to get DEP and St. John's in the same room, as long as, along with the Clearwater folks, to see if we can hammer out agreement. If, from from DEP's, DEP's perspective as as a public utility, if we, if we want to take water out of the lake, then we have to treat it to our standards of our reclaimed water, which the whole point of the way we're going to do it is we'd save, all we'd basically do is have a small filter to take out the the large organic matter and put, put that water into their their system. And DEP's now saying we're having to, we're going to have to to treat it, and I mean, it's a, so it's gone from a $300,000 project, according to DEP, to a $3 million or or somewhere allowing that.
Yeah, we had, we had approved $600,000, $200,000. What has been the success has been the pump, the $200,000. But, you know, when I, when Richard kind of gave me a brief, you know, assessment of this, is that he's hoping that maybe St. John's Water will work with the HOAs involved.
Well, but it's more than that, it's DEP as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so point being, I, I think all the commissioners were made aware of it because the HOA presidents were having some dialogue with with staff. And so maybe we jumped the gun in terms of our insertion into that communication. But point being is that we were going down a path, sounds like that path has a little bit of a pothole in it. Let's just reconvene based off of whatever options that staff has contemplated. So that, what I don't want to portray is that, you know, they left the room thinking something, everybody left.
We all did, we all did, no, I, I agree, yes. I, I, yeah, we'll, we're trying to put together that meeting ASAP with with DEP, St. John's in the room. Because what we're, what our our hope is that if we let the HOA take over the system versus the city, that they will give them more leniency, that's, that's what we're, if if we as the city were to do it, we are obligated to to do all these treatments that DEP requires. We we hope that DEP will give us some latitude to let the HOA take it on, and we be a, like an MSBU partner or some way to fund it. So that's, yeah.
Okay. And then, shameless plug, last bit, in addition to the Great Mural event, that was fantastic. Creative Hub of Apopka just celebrated their first year anniversary.
Oh, that's right.
And we made an announcement on Saturday, which is just a fun kind of contest over the next year. It's called Apopka Picture Yourself Here. So it's a, it's a photography contest that will last over the full year to make sure all the moments that Apopka celebrates, which is many over the year, can be captured properly. But it's going to culminate at the end of this period of the creation of a coffee table book that people can purchase or have within their office and things like that. And so there'll be different categories, flora and fauna, capturing people, capturing places within Apopka. And then each category will have a corresponding winner with some cash prizes, too. So I think it's just a fun way to be lighthearted and just capture the beauty of Apopka, so. There's a Facebook page, there's a website, so go check it out, it's called Apopka Picture Yourself Here. That's it.
Mr. Nesta?
Awesome, mine's a little more detailed, so sorry about that in advance. First thing, about a week and a half ago, Saturday, it's like 9:00 AM in the morning, and girls are playing at home on a bike. Aria falls off a bike, uses her head to stop the fall, gets a massive, just ugly, huge, disgusting bump on her head. So call Fire Department, they get there in moments, and we're just super helpful, super kind. I just can't say enough to my guys at Station Two for showing up and calming Lauren down, because we actually had a, she had a ride down to downtown, one of the hospitals there, and I had to kind of follow with Bella. So it was just really nice, they kept Lauren calm in that, and also kept me calm, so. So that was just really nice, can't say enough about our Fire Department, just thank you for that. Next one for, and we did RFP. Update on attorney, do we have anybody there? And if not, can we get a a firm involved for right now?
We have, we've interviewed two, and we got one more next week. We got one that looks promising. I think the next, one for next week looks promising, so we've got a couple, maybe a couple of options.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, I want to get it done sooner rather than later, so we'll have that interview next week. And then we'll get, so hopefully, something, maybe, you know, we'll have something for you next time.
Okay, understood. And then, just to understand completely, too, Attorney Rodriguez is no longer employed by us, correct?
As of today, as of 1/30, yeah, yes.
Okay, for some reason, I thought that was weeks ago. I don't know where I got that, the timeline there, so, okay. Because that's, I was just confused on that front. Okay, so in reference to, and I, and Mr. Hit sent around a map, I think, to everybody of what Alonso Williams Park, the parking lot, kind of mixing some parking with some housing. I think he did an incredible job getting parking there that is safe and adequate, is not just a dirt parking lot, that will create a lot of just progress for that park. I think it'll be really a nice setup there. And what we can do is take away those parking spots that are just horrible, that all of our cars stick out of, convert those into parallel parking spots. So it just, it really creates a, an incredible setup there to ensure the success of all the events at that park, as well as safety for everybody. And then it also provides three homes that we can decide what we want to do with. So I don't know if everybody wants to kind of, yeah, take a course of action in that front with with this in mind. I think, again, it kind of meets both, if it's not one or the other, it really will solidify and create success in a safe way to park and access the park there. So I don't know if you guys reviewed that, looked at it?
I did, but I had some concerns, because I said to him, who, how do we decide who's going to develop the property with the residents? Because I've had telephone calls of other organizations that were interested in building a affordable housing. Besides.
Wake up, Blanche, wake up.
You're pointing back there, she doesn't know which one you're pointing to.
I know it's been a long day. Commissioner asked about, you know, he now likes the plan for three houses plus parking at Alonso Williams Park. Jim's taking credit, but I'm not giving him credit, I would say it's Mike Suver, but we'll, we'll, we'll give you.
Was you?
That was me.
Oh, wow, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. But, so anyway, just kind of the the process again.
To get a contract, we would have to go out for bid, do a solicitation. Of course, this is going to be over 50, I would think. So we go through the procurement process, you know, get the scope of work, do an invitation, ITB, you know, just like we just did for the sidewalks.
Right.
And and could be a little bid, you know, be awarded. So just normal process.
And you're speaking in reference to developing the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and I think Commissioner Velasquez's question then is, what what's the pro, what should the process be for the three homes? We don't need to develop that, who, how does that, how do we award, I guess, that land or sell the land? I mean, there, I guess there's a couple of different avenues there, so.
And we actually have a, there's actually a fourth lot that's accessed off of Seventh Street. It's got a 20-foot access point, so there'd actually be four homes. Three would be built together, the other one would have a separate access.
On the south side, I I understand, okay.
Still the same process.
Same process.
Same process. Same process, yeah. Okay, okay, thank you.
Good, cool, as long as we're all, I think, I mean, if we need to take an official vote, I, you know, I'd like to motion that, but if we all are in this standing, I think that makes sense. And you guys are all agreeable to that, if you're not?
Well, I just need, well, I just. Well, we, so here, here's my thing. So I would need comfort from a Parks and Recs perspective to say, the size park that it is, because the last time that we left this, there was a consensus agreement that we need more parking. And so what I would need comfort is, based off the size park that it is, what activities are there, what's sufficient parking, what's not sufficient? What I don't have is, how much parking do we need?
I think that's a great point, yeah, let's, let's, I guess, do a needs assessment. Yeah, absolutely, that's a great point.
Randall, you must have a great idea here.
This would, we would bring this back to you as a business item.
Yeah.
For approval and adoption, so.
Sure, but I think to Commissioner Becker's point, if we need more parking in this, maybe this is not adequate enough. And that's a great point, that's my own, just.
Yeah, and I'll work with with Jim and Chuck and the mayor, and we'll bring this back as a business item.
Because another point to consider, too, right, as as you're building out that trail network around that area, you know, will that serve as a hub for that?
Like a trailhead, yeah.
Well, I know that we're doing some of it out on the north.
Sure.
So I get that piece, but just in totality.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Great point, thank you. Then, I'm, got to jump into, and if, Ms. Sherman? Please, I just want to, two different, two different points I'm going to be discussing here. The first one being kind of the the interest rates, I want to discuss that first. I guess we did go back to Seacoast into One Florida, Seacoast agreed to bring theirs up.
With a deposit, yeah.
Sure, and and One Florida did not.
Correct.
So it would make sense for us to move money from One Florida into Seacoast.
If that's the pleasure of the board.
Okay, are we in a general consensus on that?
Okay, what was Seacoast, and what was One Florida?
So One Florida's at 4.7?
4.7.
And then Seacoast is up to 5.2.
5.2, with a deposit, they were willing to do the 5.2. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. With a deposit, they were willing to go up.
So they want 27 million, 20?
A minimum 25 mil.
25 million in that account to get that interest rate, which I think is just great. So it really ensures that we're getting the best interest rate there. So do we need to take an official vote for that, or?
Not, it's a consensus, it's not, no. As long as I get a consensus at where you want to go, we're good.
Okay, so and I think that can be kind of quickly and easily done. We should be able to do that by end of business tomorrow, I I think that can be.
I just have nothing else to do.
Well, this is, but every day that goes by is more and more interest we're losing, so this, this.
I will make every effort to do so.
Yeah, I I think it definitely can be done by end of business. I mean, and then this leads me into the the next kind of piece of business I want to discuss is that we've been going back and forth in emails and things like that, and a lot of documentation's been sent. And and the goal wasn't always the interest rates, I mean, it's important for sure and and all that. But the the biggest one was trying to kind of chronologically understand where all of our accounts came from, from inception to now, creating a timeline. The issue that I had, especially with the documents that were sent yesterday, I'll call it a discrepancy or some inconsistencies came up for me. And I'm not a banker, I don't, maybe, maybe they're right, but I think it it would be worth having an outside party kind of just look at and kind of clean this up for us. Maybe FDIC, SEC, just something to make sure that we're on track and and they're cleaning up kind of where we're at. Because it just, the documents are not where we need them to be, not, it it didn't make sense. So I don't know if we need maybe a forensic audit, or again, bring in SEC, FDIC, just to confirm that things are where they need to be and how they need to be. I think that would be worth looking into.
Again, this is something that occurred in 2021, and you talk about the situation with One Florida. And what I shared with you was information, you wanted the wire instructions and all the documents, you know, associated with that, and who authorized, who signed off, and I think that information was provided. I think there was an email there.
There was, yes, received. And I confirm, I'm fairly certain, I can confirm the receipt. It's just the information that was within those documents is where I'm having some difficulties, where it's just not, just some inconsistencies. So I think bringing maybe a third party in to really help us out here is going to be best.
What are you looking for, let me, let's be clear, because we can know which, what type of third party you're referring to.
Well, again, either forensic auditor, again, I'm not a banker, so I don't want to, I can't take a specific, say, this is going to be the best course of action, but Security Exchange Commission, FDIC, just something. I wrote down some random, just quick ones here. And then again, a forensic auditor, but I don't know any forensic auditors, so.
Some of those are regulatory.
Yeah, we have our current auditors.
But they can look at and make sure that we're, we're doing it right. That's my concern, is that I want to make sure the timelines are just askew. So I want to, having them come in and say, you're, we're good, that's kind of that first layer of, you're good, let's do a little deeper of a dive then, I think would make sense.
So our clarifying comment on that regard, do our internal auditors or the folks that audit us, or external auditors? Thank you. Do, you know, as part of some of that, they look at institutional controls and things like that. Do they inspect adherence to the policy and and controls around, you know, when there are investment policy decisions executed, that the proper steps are then taken, whether it's, you know, approval of wire instructions, or, you know, separation of duties to say, hey, I'm I'm going to authorize, especially on certain amounts, obviously. Do they look at that as part of their scope of work?
If warranted, they would, if warranted, they would, you know, it depends, you know, they do an environmental, you know, assessment and and do narratives, and they, you know, to determine how deep they need to go in in regards to verifying certain things. We do have a procedure policy that's attached to the investment policy. So if you want to confirm that that procedure was followed.
I think that'd be helpful, again, it brings in, the regulatory agencies help to regulate and make sure that was done right. I'm not a banker, so I'm not, I'm not going to be the one reviewing that. It needs to be a higher level, that just makes sense in that capacity. So I just think.
We can ask them.
It helps everybody to to take care of that, so. And and a lot of that stuff, just, although those documents were there, you sent me some documents, it's not all there. So I'm missing some things here and there that just would be there otherwise. So that's just going to help us take a deeper dive and really understand where we're at.
So like FDIC, OCC, those aren't only going to be, they won't only examine their bank partners? We would have to find, if you want to go that route, like an auditing company.
I understand that, and well, that's what I think, I don't know, I just, all hands on deck, all eyes looking at it. Again, I'm not a banker, so, so that, that, I think, definitely having some type of auditor involved is is going to help.
And the only question I had on the transfer funds, is it this, it's higher rate? Is it the same type of vehicle, deposit vehicle that the funds are sitting in, same liquidity, access to funds?
In regards to this transaction?
Correct.
Again, I wasn't here when this transaction.
No, 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 I'm saying before he.
Previously, the, moving to. Previously, they're moving to Seacoast.
Oh, going to, oh.
Is it the same, is it the same product kind of?
Well, both, yeah. Uh, One Florida has a money market account, Seacoast is the same. Yeah, yes, yes, that is the same.
Okay, thank you.
So to be clear, I don't want to belabor this, but I'm not clear. Would you like for our current external auditors to take a look at the procedures? Because those procedures are required for the investment policy to see if we adhered to those procedures and policy at the time of that particular transaction?
How long have our auditors been our auditors? How long have our auditors been working for us?
As I understand it, this is their third year here?
And who are they?
Second or third year? Uh, you would, Malden, Malden, Malden.
Okay.
Yes, and Jenkins, that's it.
So I'm definitely gonna want some type of audit like that. I just don't know if it's gonna be them.
Something in that regard, so I can be clear what you're looking for.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, you got anything? All right, um, trying to get it out here quick. Um, a couple of things, uh, just want to reiterate the CRA budget dates. Uh, the CRA budget workshop is gonna be July 19th, 2023.
Oh.
At 6:00 PM.
Oh, he gave me June 21st.
Yeah, Mayor, we are gonna have a, uh, just like a, a kind of a summary meeting, June 21st for the, not for the budget, but just for information purposes for the CRA itself.
Right, that, that's the informal, this is the formal.
Correct, yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
Okay. So this is informal and then, I'm sorry.
Yeah, June 21st would be 6 o'clock here.
Okay.
Okay, and then the budget approval for the CRA will be August 16th, um, at 6:00 PM.
Are both at 6:00 PM, sorry?
Yes, correct, correct, yes, 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 yes.
August 16th?
Yes.
Wow. And nothing in between?
No, July 19th.
July 19th?
Yeah, July 19th, yes.
And so June 21st informational, July 19th budget workshop.
Oh, okay.
August budget acceptance.
Okay. And I thank you, I didn't hear the July 19th.
Okay. All right, then, um, let's see here. Uh, the Senate Bill 102, which is what we talked about when we, we looked at the property there on Plymouth Serrano. Um, I will say this, the planning commission didn't have any idea what that looked like. It, it is a, a huge, I won't say overreach because it's the state legislature. It is, it is a, it is a massive change in how we do development as, as it relates to affordable housing. So I've asked the staff, they've already left, but Bobby and Gene and, and Jim will come, come back at the next commission meeting and do as a presentation because we all need to understand what, what it, what it does. And basically, any, any commercial or industrial property can be, if it, if it moves to affordable housing is like fast track, how fast can we get it done? And it even, it even implies no, no property taxes. So it's, it's a, a, a huge change that we, we all need to know because I think it might, things that might look marginal at best might look good in relation to what this, this bill could push our way. So I just want them to do a good job of that. Um, a couple of bills is gonna run by you. Um, Bill, uh, Senate Bill 170 related to local ordinances. So basically, if, if we, if we approve an ordinance that affects somebody, let's say we got rid of, um, uh, food trucks in a certain area or something, and somebody could say, hey, uh, you know, you affected my business, there, there is a, they could provide up to a quarter award of up to $50,000 in attorney fees to the prevailing plaintiff. So just so we all know that we gotta be very careful as we, as we move forward, that we, the unintended consequences that it affects a business or a person that we could be, um, subject to this, this Bill 170. The next one, House Bill 3 relating to government and corporate activism. Um, basically, uh, the, the bill prohibits certification as a QPD if a bank is engaged in unsafe, unsound business practices by denying or canceling services based on political beliefs or affiliations, religious beliefs or affiliations, business sectors or any other factor that is not quantitative, impartial, risk-based standard or applying social credit scores. So, um, when we were meeting with the folks from, um, our new, uh, investment advisor, I made sure they understood, they hadn't, they never, hadn't seen the, the bill yet.